February 25th, 2025 Albemarle County Planning Commission. And I'll begin by establishing a quorum. Do you mind calling the role, please?
Mr. Missile?
Here.
Mr. Carizano?
Here.
Ms. Firehawk?
Mr. Murray?
Bivins?
Yeah.
And Mr. Moore?
Here, thank you.
Great, thank you. We have a quorum and with that I will open up the work session and ask for the staff's presentation, please. This is CPA 2021 dash two AC 44 comp plan update, AC 44 parks and rec open space. We've been waiting for this for a long time. Thanks to the weather.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Tori Kanelopoulos. I'm a principal planner on the long range planning team and also joined today by Tim Padalino, Chief of Parks Planning for Albemarle County, and also by additional staff from community development and also from the parks team as well to help answer questions today. So we'll be talking about the Parks Recreation and Open Space Chapter, which will hopefully be on the screen in just a moment. For now, you can see a dog enjoying the trails. But we're looking forward to jumping into the discussion after some snow days.
What's the dog's name? That's probably the most important thing.
That is Sky.
Sky? Awesome. Great dog.
Thank you. Another stakeholder is the parks.
That's right. So today we'll start off with a brief summary of commission feedback that we've heard to date on this chapter from previous phases and some more recent emails, summarize community input that we've heard, and then Tim will give an overview of the chapter itself. We'll talk about the upcoming schedule and then have some focus topics for the commission's discussion. So these look a little bit different than what we first shared in your memo, so I'll talk about the focus topics a little bit. So previously, we had shared objectives two, three, and six. So after further review, we decided to change to three, five, and six since Objective Two, which is to increase the amount of county-owned land used for parks and greenways, directly feeds into implementation of Objective Three, so decided to focus more on that. And that's to accelerate the development of urban parks and greenways in the development areas. We added Objective Five to increase the environmental sustainability and resilience of our parks and greenways, given their significant staff, community, commission, and board interest in this topic. And overall, these objectives and their actions emphasize the needs for more parks and greenways in our community, especially in the development areas, and the need to use our parks and greenways to protect and restore the natural environment. So one thing to note about Objective Six is that greenways can be improved at different standards, such as a dirt surface or a paved surface. So from a multimodal transportation perspective, typically that would be a shared use path to be considered part of the transportation network compared with greenways that are only part of the recreational uses. So we have a couple of slides to summarize previous commission feedback on this topic. We heard to prioritize new parks, including small pocket parks in the development areas, that there's too much reliance currently on developers to provide open space, and that's usually private for specific neighborhoods. We should look at more creative funding sources for parks and greenways, improve connectivity, and then also noting that parks are an important community gathering space, one of those third spaces, so not work and not home, and also a place that's either low or no cost for people to go to. Also heard about the need for making sure we have staffing and maintenance resources as we increase our parks and greenways, and then noting some themes that we may want to add in or strengthen to this chapter, and Roanoke was shared as an example. So a lot of these are related to outdoor recreation as economic development, and then also collaborating regionally and ensuring equitable access and environmental stewardship. And we wanted to note, we did receive a couple of additional emails from the commission today on this chapter, so we haven't summarized them in detail here, but we did, we did read those before the meeting, so thank you all. And then from a community input theme standpoint, we heard about the need for connections to parks and trails from neighborhoods, especially for walking and biking, needs for amenities for teenagers, not just younger children, more amenities and recreational programs, spaces for music and entertainment, more shade in our parks, and then improving universal access, including for wheelchairs and strollers. Also heard about the importance of sustainable land management, including for tree canopy and stream buffers, and also increasing access to our waterways, especially the Ravana River. So we also held a recent open house on January 29th, and that was focused on the environmental stewardship and parks chapters. So this is a brief summary of input that we heard related to parks, and that includes support for a future Parks and Rec master plan and ongoing public engagement, and then also updating the Parks and Rec Needs Assessment. There was support for acquiring and using county-owned land for parks and greenways, and then revisiting specific recreational uses and amenities with future parks planning. So we also wanted to note that there's been a lot of ongoing interest, including feedback that we heard at this event for allowing equestrian trails in the future at Biscuit Run Park. So we did want to note that level of detail is typically not addressed at the comp plan level, but would be considered and assessed as part of the future county-wide Parks and Needs Assessment update, and also the future Parks Master Plan noted in those actions 1.1 through 1.3. So now I will turn it over to Tim to talk about the chapter itself.
Yeah, thanks so much, Tori. Good afternoon, Chair Missile and members of the Planning Commission. Tim Padalino, Chief of Parks Planning for Albemarle County. And I'll just continue the overview information of the Parks Recreation and Open Space Chapter. So just to share our goal, Albemarle County will have a connected and accessible network of parks and trails with both active and passive recreation opportunities to improve quality of life, offer active modes of transportation, enhance climate resiliency, and provide access to nature. Parks, trails, and amenities will be welcoming and inclusive and meet the needs of our growing community. And an overview of our objectives for this chapter. Number one is to plan for the parks and recreation needs of current and future community members through a process that is equitable, inclusive, and responsive to our existing and our emerging needs. Objective Two is to increase county ownership and use of land for parks, greenways, blueways, and rec facilities, prioritizing opportunities in the development areas. Our third objective, accelerate the development of urban parks, pocket parks, and greenways in the development areas. Number four, increase access to county parks and trails with an emphasis on inclusion, equity, and universal access. Number five, increase the environmental resilience of county parks and greenways while restoring the health of the natural environment. Number six, expand and improve the trail networks in blueways in county parks and greenways and increase multimodal connections. And number seven, increase the availability and accessibility of recreation programs, classes, and facilities, including athletic fields. So a lot of these objectives and goals are not brand new. Of course, they've been identified by our community in the past. And AC 44 continues several important themes that are established in our 2015 comprehensive plan, including developing parks and greenways, protecting natural areas, expanding access to parks and greenways, and enhanced multimodal connections. And in addition to those continued themes, several emerging themes have been incorporated into the AC 44 plan, specifically this chapter, such as increasing county-owned land for parks and greenways, expanding parks and greenways in the development areas, including pocket parks, increasing walkable access to parks and greenways, so we're using a quarter mile or 15-minute walk on average, and also enhancing our focus on environmental resilience and sustainable land management practices, things like invasive species management, restoring forests and riparian areas and streams, and simply conserving the natural heritage resources in the first place. In addition to those high-level themes, there was a few additional points of emphasis I'll point out. The first is this idea of having a collection of separate but interrelated projects along the Ravana River. So it's an existing vision for a regional river park system comprised of greenway trail expansions, blueway access enhancements, and similar upgrades. It's not a new idea. It's in our comprehensive plan. It's in all of our development area master plans. These ideas are also in the Urban Ravana River Corridor Plan, prepared by TJ PDC for both the city and the county. And the idea is to have, again, this, this collection of parks and trails and blueway access points that become more than just the sum of their individual parts. The vision spans 17 miles from Brookhill River Park, right underneath Route 29, all the way downstream to Buck Island, the future planned Buck Island River Park. So that would link places 29, Pantops, the city of Charlottesville, the Monticello World Heritage Site, and the rural area in our Ravana District. And the Ravana River is the primary waterway in the Charlottesville-Albemarle metro area, and it's really currently an underutilized asset, but has the potential to be a high-profile highlight of our region's outdoor rec industry and our lifestyle. And then finally, the additional point of emphasis relates to the need and the sense of urgency around parks and recreation, community centers, greenways, and all of these assets. We currently have that need for additional infrastructure and additional opportunities, but there's the additional factor that those needs are growing based on anticipated population growth, urbanizing land patterns, especially in our development areas, a pattern of increased visitation and use, and the deepening importance of parks, greenways, and outdoor recreation to our community's quality of life and our health and our wellness. So just as some brief examples, we saw that as a result of the coronavirus pandemic, there was a 16% increase in visitation year over year in 2020, and then an additional 14% increase on top of that in 2021. So zooming out more broadly, we had over 600,000 more visitors in 2023 than we did in 2019. That's over a 40% increase. And this is all consistent with national trends from coast to coast and border to border. It's clear that parks and greenways are really essential infrastructure for thriving communities.
Great, thank you, Tim. And just to cover a little bit of how this chapter relates to the other AC 44 chapters. So as mentioned, from a transportation standpoint, portions of the trail network that are maintained at a higher standard are part of the overall multimodal network. The way that we manage our resources and do management planning, including removing invasive species and trail sighting and restoring stream banks, has an impact on the environmental stewardship of our parks. And then, of course, making sure that we have the parks and open space needed to make the development areas thriving places to live. Also, we have historic scenic and cultural resources in our parks, which we can protect and include signage for. Recreation is a major tourist draw for a thriving economy. The Community Facilities Chapter has recommendations for county-owned land in parks and also community uses for schools for off-hours. And then in the Resilient Community Chapter, there's recommendations for community resilience hubs, and those could potentially be in community centers. So this is a update of our schedule. Today is the PC Parks and Rec Presentation with the Board Meeting scheduled for next Wednesday. As mentioned, we had the community event on January 29th for this chapter. We went to the board on February 19th, and we talked about rural area land use in the growth management policy, and we'll be tentatively going to the board on April 2nd to talk about development area land use and community design guidelines. And those are updated versions of those chapters that were first shared in Phase Three. And then for Thriving Economy, coming to the Planning Commission on March 11th and tentatively to the board on April 16th. So I believe that will be the, the next chapter you all will see. And we also have a virtual lunch and learn this Thursday for that chapter. So just wanted to put in a quick plug for our website and encourage folks to visit if they haven't already. That's the best place to access the draft chapters and also share your feedback on the draft actions. And I did want to note that whenever we receive comments, whether it's by email or at our events, if the chapter team members weren't there, we always share it with them, and that's something we've done throughout the process. So we do, you know, spread the word a lot further than just the core AC 44 team. So these are, again, the focus topics for today. We want to hear if these seem like the right priorities for this chapter, and if the commission has anything that seems to be missing, and also happy to hear feedback on any of the other objectives and actions as well, so that I'll turn it over for discussion and questions. Thank you.
Great report. Thank you both. Okay, well, we'll open it up for questions. Let's start with that, and then just do a quick round of questions, if that's okay. Start with Commissioner Firehawk.
Start the other way because my tablet and my comments are coming back.
I knew that. That's why I put you on the spot. Commissioner Moore?
I was actually hoping we could start over there. That's okay. Well, first, I just wanted to commend and thank you for listening and making sort of Objective Three kind of the top one listed here as far as urban parks and greenways. You know, I commented at past meetings how few county parks there are in the development areas, which is now where the majority of, of the county lives. And, and also that it's, there's sort of talking here about, about kind of activating it in sort of community ways. I know that gets more into the tactics down the road. It may not be at the AC 44 level, but I know some of the limitation I've seen in, in the county parks we do have is that it's like trees and trails, which is lovely. I like walking on trails. But I also have seen parks in, in spaces that are, that are activated with, you know, like amphitheaters and ball courts and like, you know, lots of things going on and people coming together and seeing each other across lines that usually divide us. And so I think our parks can really play a role in that way. I mean, I appreciate, are we discussing? I guess we're doing questions?
Yeah, if you have any off topic.
Well, I just started, I just started launching in.
That's all right.
I like parks. No, I appreciate the, the effort that's gone in here so far. I did, kind of on the, the, the the, the actions on Objective One, I, I, I do, I don't know, I guess you kind of almost kind of have to do this in a way, but like, I do get a little antsy sometimes when I just see things that effectively are like, we're going to plan to make a plan. Like, really? That's, that's the whole part of the objective one. But, but no, I think I see these three being a really nice set of priorities.
Awesome. Thank you. Commissioner Murray, any questions?
Yeah, so because our, our county's schools are parks after hours. What is the interaction with the school board and determining the right mix of athletic, athletic facilities to support our youth, to make sure that, that that matches both the demand for those sports? You know, and that we're, we're putting money in the right place in terms of like helping provide those facilities. I'm thinking particularly, you know, we just had an Olympic athlete, you know, in Crozet on the Western team, and, you know, and I realize that the, the facility that they use isn't even really a county, isn't really even a county park. But meanwhile, we have some other teams, they're not performing in a very stellar way at Western Albemarle, and they seem to get more than their share of revenue. And is, so what kind of discussions do you have with the school board about like where there's opportunities where maybe we could do more to support our, our youth athletes?
Yeah, that's a good question, Commissioner Murray. Parks and Recreation does have an established connection with public schools. I don't think it's so much the school board, more so public school staff. But we do have our eye on those opportunities. We do have an established memorandum of understanding with public schools for community use. After certain hours, you know, there's some restrictions on the timing, but that pertains to virtually all the public school facilities, whether it's walking tracks or trails at Lamb's Lane or the courts and the fields. Parks and Recreation has access to like the reservation system, and we help program those courts or fields on behalf of some of the community groups, you know, in the leagues and other, other programs. So there is some good, there is some good collaboration, but I think I'm hearing, to your point, perhaps there's an opportunity to strengthen that.
And then, then also the, the needs assessment. First of all, I think it's, I think it's fantastic that we're talking about doing a new needs assessment and doing it regularly. I think that's probably one of the most important things in this whole document. But how can we make sure that we are really capturing the, those needs in a broader way than we have in the past, and particularly the economic impact of, of those activities? And I think about, and because, because really in this, this county, recreation is, is much larger than just soccer and football and tennis. It's, it's hunting, it's bird watching, it's, it's running, it's cycling, it's, it's long-distance swimming. It's, it's a lot of different things that we're not even really fully capturing or looking at the economic impact. You know, and, and I have some numbers that I'll share later about some of the, the economic impact of some of those sports. But, you know, any thoughts about how we can maybe broaden that, that process to be more encompassing of the variety of outdoor recreation and indoor recreation that occurs in Albemarle County?
Yeah, more great comments and questions. I'd say one of the primary ways we do that is through continued engagement with Visitors Bureau. I know Courtney Cucation and her team, specifically Chris Ritter, are focused on outdoor recreation destination development. So that includes things like promotion and advertising, but also the, you know, the hard improvements, the infrastructure, access upgrades, trail extensions. So all of those are critical. And I know they just completed their outdoor, I'm sorry, their Tourism Master Plan in 2024. There is some really good information and data about outdoor recreation in there. But I think there's still more analysis that could be done to understand everyday recreation economic impacts, but also special events, how outdoor recreation can complement what our county does so well with heritage tourism. So, and, and food and beverage, special events, performance arts. I think we can elevate outdoor recreation up to that same kind of gold standard.
So will, will some of those topics and action items be included in like the Economic Development Chapter? Or, or maybe appropriate to have some action items related to economic development and, and recreation in, in this chapter?
Yeah, I'm not sure how to answer that, but I think some amount of content in each chapter that sort of cross-references and builds on each other is appropriate. And to what extent it's in parks and recreation or in economic or, or some combination, I think it's, it's something that should be in both.
I mean.
And just to build off of that, we did just share a draft Thriving Economy chapter today, which we had in the works already. So I think based on some of the more recent feedback we've been hearing, there's some good opportunities with the next iteration to, to go back and better, you know, improve some of those cross, cross ties.
Great. Commissioner Bivins?
Thank you, Chair. I guess I'm in this pragmatic mood right now, given that I don't believe we're going to get any more dollars from anywhere unless we derive the dollars ourselves. So part of me is sort of the three things here that I see, if I could have a sense, and maybe not today's not today, but as you build this out, if these are the three things you want us to focus on, I'd really like to know how they hang off of Objective Three. Because everybody knows, at least on this panel, I don't care if we put another dollar in another rural park that's given to us ever, except for a couple of things which I said today. But where I think there is a, where I think we have a, a deficit is in number three. When I look at how we, if, if, if we believe that the world according to Albemarle County is going to be dense in 5%, if that's the 5% solution here, then Objective Three needs to drive some of the stuff that we're doing. And then how you hang out, how you hang, and I will give the county, the county park staff kudos on number five because I live, well, I don't live the closest. That's not true. The easiest to walk to in the Jack, in the Lamb's Lane area, for those of you who don't know, Albemarle High School, Jurney Greer and our Jack Jewitt, and, and the Boys and Girls Club make up this place called the Lamb's Lane Campus off of Hydraulic Road. And one of the green spaces there that's the easiest to, to sort of walk to, if I use easy in quotes and in bold letters, is the Charlotte Humphreys Park. And what Parks and Rec did with, in conjunction with the CAC there, is they made one of the, what I will say, having lived in that area over close to 40 years, they did what I thought was one of the most intense and concentrated attempts to clean up the, the mess that was the underlying growth at the Charlotte Humphreys Park. It is absolutely much more usable, and I can see because of the work that they did, the numbers of people who use that location have skyrocketed. And so if simply applying that kind of work, the sort of Objective Five, to make it a place that people aren't afraid to go into daylight, I'm not asking for, for, I'm not suggesting teeter tot climbing pyramids and foolishness like that, but just making a green space that people believe that it's an inviting and, and, and appropriate green space, and looking at sort of what are the real things about Objective Three, that's what I'd like to hear you talk about at some point. How do we live? How do we enhance the 5% solution of, of density around here in a way that it in fact lives into the, all the rest of the free land that's been given to the county? So that's the question I'm going to be asked hitting on you from now on. Tell me what's happening in the 5%. Don't tell me what's happening out in the middle of nowhere. I, you know, I get that there's a lot. Tell me what's happening in the 5%. Tell me who you're talking to as, with regards to redevelopment, like Fashion Square. Tell me what you're doing with, now that apparently Ryle Hill's not going to have, half of, half of it's going to be empty after Joanne, Joanne Fabric closes. What are the opportunities that we can go there, given all of the, all of the development that's on Berkmar? Will those, because we can't drive, I've been, my guys told me we can't drive across each other's properties as of the last Berkmar flats or whoever we had come in here, we can't make that connection. So maybe they can go down to Ryle Hill, to a green space in Ryle Hill that would become a community green space. That's the kinds of things off of Objective Three that I'm going to be really excited to hear about.
Awesome. Carizano?
Well, thank you both again for the presentation and for this chapter, as, as already been mentioned, long awaited. And part of it is because it's, there's so much opportunity here, right? And as we pair this with our economic development and, and, and some of the communities that we're trying to create and activity zones and so forth. So there's a great opportunity here for sure. And that's why, I think that's why we're all excited to finally see this. Some of you, one of my colleagues here have heard me say, years, years ago, my, my, several years ago, my son went to Georgia Tech in Atlanta, and my wife and I really enjoyed seeing the Belt Line and what, what transpired through the years there and how it grew. So I think, I think I've mentioned this before. I don't know if you guys have heard me talk about this, but when I see this and, and some of the connection, connective tissue that, that you're beginning, some of the, the maps that you're showing, it reminded me of that conceptually. Now it's in practice, how do we then put that into play? And it's, and, and there, there was a lot of conversation with the private sector. It wasn't just public, but the developers and, and thinking about, well, we have this opportunity to connect to this resource. So it's not just about an open space, but it's also about connecting to restaurants and to, so they had bike rental shops and all, all kinds of things that, that lend themselves to this economic development, right? So the opportunity is definitely there. I, I'm, I, I like the way that we're pairing this and we're thinking, you guys are already, I mean, I'm saying things I know you guys are thinking about, right? I just, I hope it doesn't just sit separate, but it really engages with all these other sections that we're working on, particularly community development. And I, I did have a question. When I read, when I read three in particular, so, so the, the kind of accelerating the, the development of these parks, particularly in the urban area, and I agree with my colleague, I think that's, that's a focus for sure, because that's where the economic development is going to be happening. And even, even though you got some economic development in the rural areas, there, you're going to drive. That's, that's, that's face it. It's a big county. So can you talk about how you're thinking? I mean, what, what are the tools in your, in your tool chest that you have to, to begin to implement this acceleration? How do you, how do you begin to, to get there?
Yeah, great question, Commissioner Carizano. I think right now we have certain tools as a Parks and Recreation Department and as a local government organization. We are participating in the current development review process. So when there's a legislative application, we're able to, you know, as you know, determine its consistency with the comprehensive plan. And where it's applicable, we can let developers or applicants know that the county has a vision for a greenway connection or an open space or something along these lines. And we do try to work to move development proposals in the direction of making those connections, providing new destinations for outdoor experiences and other recreation. So that's one big way that we have done it over the years. Another tool, may not be the heaviest or the strongest tool, is being able to receive donations. That's obviously not a catalytic way to do things, but we have received donations, both easements and property to help enlarge our parks or establish new parkland or help build out the greenway connections. But there are certain tools that we don't have. But there are certain tools that we don't have right now. Right now, we don't have a land acquisition policy, a land acquisition fund. So these are some of the tactics, like the very specific ways that some of these broader visions could eventually be implemented more quickly. We also, I would be remiss not to mention the county's partnerships with a lot of different organizations and clubs. We do have a lot of success in terms of partnering with trail, uh, trail clubs or other advocacy groups in trying to move the needle on access to outdoor recreation spaces. And always looking for more opportunities.
Thank you.
Chair, if I could just come along, because I'm going to give you something here. I think what my, what what our colleague is suggesting, and this is any having been in and out of Atlanta for, I don't know, two or three decades, or two decades now. What you're also talking about is they leverage the density. That's what they did. When you saw that sort of creeping out out of Georgia Tech and some of the stuff that was happening out there and up and sort of Buckhead and places like that. And so the question, I think, what you're also asking is how are we going to leverage the density to promote Parks and Recreation or Green, or as our other colleague talks about, sort of intentional community places? How are we going to do that? How are we going to use, because you know, density in our community tends to sound like a four letter word. But in fact, it can be, it can actually be a gold bullion if done correctly. And so I think that's what you, when you talk about what you saw there.
I I think that's a really good way of of articulating and leveraging the the density. What they, I mean, as you know, what they did in that in that Belt Line development, it it a lot of areas were were areas that were blighted. And so it was it was urban renewal that was going on with a densification and infill. So so they combine all of these elements that we've been talking about here, right? How do how do we leverage the density? How do we densify and make sure that we're taking full advantage of our development zone? They did that. I mean, and they did that with areas that weren't necessarily, you know, that they were they were either blighted, there were buildings that were in some cases condemned. The the old Sears, trying to can't think of the
Right.
Can't think of the name of the of the development right now, but it was actually condemned and they had to go in and they they did a a structural retrofit on it and other shops and it's it's actually live work. So there's shops, there's apartments above. The Belt Line goes right through it. So anyway. Yes, thank you. I think that's a good way of putting it.
Just because we're already talking about funding real quick and no Karen wants her turn. But you know, I think the one of the things I think it's, you talked about a a park acquisition fund. I think one of the things this that I see all the time is that, you know, you have these a new development come on board and they're offering to make a little tiny pocket, a bunch of little tiny pocket parks. And no one really wants the pocket park. What what they really want is there's a sidewalk that they've desperately wanted for years just down the road. We don't have the ability to you know, ask the developer to build that sidewalk. But what we could do is we could, if we had a fund, we could say, listen, we'll provide this as an option. If you would rather contribute money to this fund, it's equivalent to the pocket park you would have built. We'll present that as an option that you could do. And I think providing as an option would provide flexibility and allowed us to fill some of the gaps and things like where we're we're desperately missing a sidewalk and people could care less whether we have, you know, a dozen more little pocket parks or dog parks or whatever.
Commissioner Farthing?
Thanks. So I sent you my, I I just have a little nitty picky comments. I just sent you the PDF. You can look at that later and try to understand what the typos actually are saying. But I guess I'll I'll stick to objective three for now. And I just wanted to note that 3.1, we have evaluated and update requirements for new development zoning and change in land use projects to contribute and connect to the countywide Parks and Rec system. It it feels like a, you wrote a strategy to have a strategy. So I'd rather that you kind of went back to the drawing board with that one and actually fleshed out what those actual steps were that you need to do so that 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 can happen. You know, and if if you want, I could sit somewhere and brainstorm some things with you later, but I'm just saying that I really would like to see what those concrete steps are. And, you know, so you know, one example is, and this is more of a bigger idea, but you know, having so, and maybe this is already embedded in this document, but having a connectivity master plan so that you have on a map all of the spots that you wish you could get a connection. Because when you, like when you were talking about having the, you know, application review and your participation in that, you know, if you think about the the process of someone thinking about developing land and and the all the steps. And by the time they're coming to the county with, here's my, here's what I want to do, they're they're often pretty far along. If they had a map that they could refer to when they're in that sort of dreaming, visioning stage, and they're like, oh, the county wants that. So you're about to speak. Go ahead.
Well, no, I'll wait for your first.
No, go ahead. I finished that.
So what you're talking about is a multi-modal plan. As opposed, you know, I mean, it's parks are a part of this. Some of these places where people's actions would be will be not necessarily in a park and some of the opportunities that creates these connections definitely are.
It could be a trail, it could be a bike lane, it could be whatever it is to try to get to those green resources. So that you have this sort of connectivity plan with nodes and, you know, the kind of, you know, master plan we would do if I if my firm was doing this for a city. And so so that people know what you want. And so early on, they can proffer that trail connection or whatever. And I also really like that idea of that maybe having a a fund in lieu of where, you know, maybe they have such a little scrap of land. I'm thinking about some of the developments along Avon Street Extended where it's like, okay, I have to give them some open space, but it's like this weird corner. And then they call it the dog park or whatever, you know, because they're like, I gotta have some use for it. I don't know what we can do with it so dogs can go here. But it's it's just, it's not really a great space. It's not really big enough to recreate in.
Well, I would just, you know.
I I mean, sure, you could have some benches outside and a barbecue pit, but sometimes we just don't get very good spaces out of these. And so it would be maybe, you know, like you wouldn't always accept it in lieu of, sometimes you'd say, no, we really need something in here, but but that it would be something they could think about proposing. But that then you need to have your master plans. You say, okay, great. That's enough money with this and this. Now we can build this thing that we've already got costed out or at least conceptualized to the point that now we can build it. So you don't just have a fund building up with no vision of how it's going to be deployed.
Well, I I'd just like to try and tease those two things apart.
Sure.
With one of them being like the green space itself or the plaza, if it's more urban, tot lot versus, you know, putting money towards a park. That's a, that's a, it's an interesting idea to to explore further. Then there's the other sort of like, how are you getting to the park? Or maybe it's just transportation in general, and some of that passes through green spaces. And I think I see them too. They're definitely connected. They they can't be, whether you want to have the Belt Line in this community and that Belt Line passes through a lot of the stream valleys that we have in our community to to do that and provide a backbone for redevelopment of, probably this is on 29, you know, and being able to have some green spaces.
There can be grand scheme, grander schemes, but you also might just have little things like, we really wish we had a stub trail to this park. We had good success with that in Charlottesville, where developers would say, oh, you, you know, where we laid it out and then, oh, you want a connection? And I'm laying out my blippity blip development, I'm not going to name, you know, okay, therefore we, and so because we wanted that as a city, the developer knew where we wanted these things. Then it was an easy conversation. We did things like we varied the sidewalk width and some of the street and curb and gutter to fit the trail connection that we wanted. But it it, we were all on the same page because the the thinking of the connection was way before anyone had a development plan in mind. That's.
Right. And I I just want to like, close the thought to be like, yes, that's something that's very important. Hopefully, as we bring you your transportation chapter, you'll like, oh, well, at least you sort of outlined how you're going to get to that plan. We're not going to bring you a map that says, hey, here are all the places we want the trail.
Right.
With it with this comp plan, but I think it's very important for us to staff, we've been talking a lot about staff levels, the need to define for to extract it a little bit. Transportation, this is the broad strategy we're going to do. And priorities, what we're going to try to achieve with that. Same thing with the bike stuff, whether it comes to like or walking and this kind of idea of the transportation network. And it does have to intersect with the green spaces that we have. And I think there's a real lot of opportunities in our community to do that.
Right.
I think a lot of this chapter is really focused on once you get to the green space, what's there?
Right, but I I would say, if you think about it from a resilient standpoint, which we're talking about throughout this, okay, let's just be a bird for a moment, not even a a two legged creature. If you have these green fingers that are connecting your landscape, you're providing these flyways, pathways for amphibians. So it's it's not just like a bike lane that I'm I'm talking about the green connectivity that might be never traversed by you or I.
Fair enough.
Okay, so there's that level. And then there's also the level of, oh, and this could also be a green finger, a spur that comes up into this neighborhood. Because right now we have these sort of vague areas like parks and green systems. The green blobs, if you will, and we're going to work to make them more defined than that. But I'm, I would like to see, yes, we actually want a spur through here. We want away, like I was, when I drive home, I go down Avon Street Extended, and then I take that sharp curve that I have to behave and be slow so I don't run. And then you take a right and then Biscuit Run Park is, whoop, here's the entrance. And I try to think, what if I was a pedestrian and I wanted to walk? You can't do it right now. It's it's kind of, and maybe you're going to fix that, but.
So.
Right. But like, that's just an example, just, you know, thinking about how these neighborhoods can connect. So we don't have to beat this to death. I just really want to see a fleshing out of of 3.1 of all the ways that we're going to do this. You know, there's probably five different things in there. And they need to turn into sentences and specific actions that you can put in your your staff work plan. So I mean, I think that was the the biggest point that I wanted to make. I mean, I I do see in the presentation this evening how you heard our comments from the last time. And I've got that. And and then I just make one broader comment, which is maybe that was already thought really broad, but in in the, this is really going to the beginning and just thinking about objectives in general. You know, I do a lot of objective and goal writing for fun in my free time. And an objective, really, you need to be able to tell if you did it. So it needs to be a discreet action. So when we have things like, you know, explore opportunities or something like that, that's so vague that you can't really say if we did that. So I'd like our objectives to be to the point where you could benchmark them. We did that action, yes or no? And so that's that's something I just think overall, the the whole document needs some attention to in terms of making things very specific and discreet, because sometimes the objectives sound to me like goal statements. And then just a really quick comment. If you look at like, we talk about equity and inclusion and access, and it seems like that's that's already stated in in sort of our overarching principles. That we want it to be connected and accessible for everyone. Even objective one and four sound very similar. In the, so I just just give some attention to that and in your mind, think of like, when am I talking about a vision? What is the vision? Then when am I, what am I talking about a specific goal? And then what's the specific objective that achieves that goal and can I measure it? Is it? Is it measurable? If it's not, if you can't measure it, it's not. So there's a little bit of, I guess, just general wordsmithing to be done in here. And I'm happy to add to that offline. I don't want to take up the evening. No one wants to wordsmith a document in public. That's too excruciating. But that's kind of where I was coming to. But I I mean, I think everyone's heart's in the right place. I think we all want to have equitable access to green space. Sometimes people in the rural area do need a place to walk and convene. Just put that in the record. Not everyone has space. You think about down in Esmont, which is in the rural area, but developed, it's a, it's a little community. And there's a lot of cool new opportunities for connectivity, right? They've done the the connect, the the walking trail at the park across from the school, but there's actually some other linkages through that community that parks has gone and walked. But that could be an amazing kind of master walkable plan that could really enhance that community. So I want us, I guess, have a discreet objective, for example, that says we're going to develop a connectivity master plan for the urban area. More discreet and actually do that planning activity later, whether we want to get a grant to fund that or something. But that we actually do that instead of say, look for opportunities as they happen to come up. Like, that's just a little too namby pamby. And it's, we really need more boots on the ground evaluation of like whether some of these connections can even work. And I'll give you just an example. And this might be more for the transportation chapter, but we talk about our 10 foot wide asphalt path that we want to see in front of everything. And we we are continuously running up against situations where, sure, that guy could or gal could build that, but then it runs into a hill in the next parcel. So it's a path to nothing. And so like, couldn't someone look at that whole corridor before we start just making every developer put in a 10 foot wide asphalt path? Like, maybe that isn't how we're going to connect that corridor. So let's just stop that and have some nice trees instead and a better sidewalk or whatever the thing is that we're trying to use for connectivity. So get out of the transportation chapter, but just want you, if you think about it, not as discreet things, but moving people and wildlife and finding those opportunities. And we have it in a map, then it will probably be realized more.
I'm just disappointed you didn't add stormwater to that one, too, because it could be that. I wonder if I could, oh, are you?
I'm done. Yeah.
I was actually going to briefly riff on Christian Murray's and Commissioner Firehug's comments. One is, I think the thing I was saying earlier about about some of the objectives, especially in the first section, being kind of like, we're going to plan to make a plan is very much like what you're saying. And not to like lecture about smart goals or whatever, but you know, that's specific and measurable and and sort of achievable, but also aspirational. You know, those are things that I think, I mean, the the objectives we've got listed here would not be smart goals in that in that sense of sort of business planning. They're they're nice goals. They but they're not, they're not specific or measurable. It's just like, we're going to increase the percentage of community members who have sort of walking access to a park. Okay, what is it now? What are we going to get to? You know, that kind of thing.
Right, like it's in GIS, it's fairly easy to just do a quick walk score and say, what percent of neighborhoods do not cannot walk to a park from their house?
Yeah.
And we could do that in in five minutes.
And the other bit I was going to add to Christian Murray, when you were asking about the schools, is, I mean, some schools actually serve that function very well. And Commissioner Vivins mentioned the Lamb's Lane Campus. I'm also in the Woodbrook neighborhood. I mean, that sort of playground and field and ball courts and everything there is part of the schools, actually more of an urban style park than any of our parks. But it it doesn't make it onto the maps. And I wonder if there's some kind of more formal way to include those in in kind of what we're doing.
That's a good. I'll throw out a couple of thoughts and then we can kind of just open it up, continue talking. One is just sort of kind of positioning where we are today. And I have to keep reminding myself that we're talking about AC44. So we're talking about a 20 year plan, and it's really easy for me to quickly get in the weeds and start talking about details. But I, unless I'm wrong, I think we still need to kind of zoom ourselves out a little bit, make sure that the big vision's there. Maybe it's not achievable in the next two or three years. But if we're talking 20 years, it's a great goal to have, right? And that at some point, the resources, if we really dedicate ourselves to achieving that goal, will come to the table. It also sets a framework for a lot of other things that are going on between or during that 20 years that helped to achieve those goals that are in there. So I just had a couple of quick questions, kind of setting, I guess, it not really setting the stage, but just big picture. I think, Tori, you mentioned, like I said, not getting into details, but we were talking about horses. So that's a detail. But you mentioned countywide parks and needs assessment. We're talking about the Parks and Rec and Open Space Chapter of AC44. If you think about like the chart, the diagram of things, the plans that all touch the the subject of Parks and Recreation and Open Space. What other ones are there? There's Parks and Needs Assessment. There's this document. Is this sort of the top of the org chart? Or how does that all play out? What other documents are we anticipating?
Yeah, so I think looking at those other plans, I would say, yes, the comp plan is is the overall guidance and is more of the high level, as you mentioned. There's also. There's also more detailed recommendations of in the area plans, like Croze and Pantops, Places 29 and the others. And then Tim, I don't know if you have anything to add from a plan standpoint.
Yeah, that's a great setup, Tori. Um, I think that was the missing part of the exchange so far is trying to balance a countywide comp plan, but not replicate the maps in the place, uh, development area master plans to try and find that balance. And also the balance between Parks and Recreation and also, uh, transportation planning. But yeah, with a comprehensive plan kind of being the top perhaps, and then the master plans being similar information and more specific geography and more detail. I think we would then have a countywide Parks and Recreation and Open Space Plan.
Okay.
But that's a countywide document and then getting into more specific granular detail, uh, park master plans for each particular facility. So kind of in that order, I think.
And what's, what's the timeline for each of those? I, I guess we're waiting for this to be done and then you'll, or are those existing and they'll be re, they'll be reviewed and updated?
Well, we would need to create a countywide park and recreation or park and open space master plan. We do have master plans for many of our parks, not every single one. Either one of those could be measured in months beyond 12. I mean, it's not a short process to do with the engagement, with the professional consulting that we would probably want to have as part of that effort.
Yeah.
The community engagement, it all becomes kind of a lengthy process. Not that they all need to be a year or more long.
Yeah.
But it's kind of on that scale.
Yeah.
We do have existing park master plans that an amendment to that would be much shorter in duration, of course. And then the rec and needs assessment, if I recall correctly, in 2018, that was started and finished within a year or less.
Got it.
So that would be another one of those plans that would be an update or amendment as opposed to starting from scratch.
Okay. That's really helpful. Um, so shifting to resources. You know, as you think about, uh, measurable and achievable and sort of setting, you know, sort of under promising and over delivering, right? So I'd setting expectations for the community about this subject, which is so near and dear. And to somebody's hearts, and, and because it's also a differentiator for us. What are the resources available to, to achieve what you have here? And is there the need for additional resources, whether that's grant funding? You mentioned an acquisitions plan, you know, fund accident, I think it's acquisitions fund, funding plan. You know, how do you, what is the vision for resources to be added to achieve these things?
Yeah, that's a great question, Chair Missel. Um, right now we have local revenues through the capital improvement program, of course. So we rely on that most heavily for parks enhancements or new construction. We do pursue grant funding opportunities. Um, those are hit or miss. Sometimes the grant programs shrink down to only be eligible for maintenance projects as opposed to new construction.
Yeah.
But we're always keeping tabs on those and pursuing those where, where and when we can. A new resource available to Albemarle County is the Albemarle Parks Foundation. It's not a county entity per se. It's a standalone nonprofit 501(c)(3) organization with the mission of supporting and enhancing Albemarle County parks and greenways. We rely on partnerships a lot. Sometimes that's more in terms of trails, maintenance or trail construction. But there's other more creative partnerships that have happened. The Virginia Blue Ridge Disc Golf Club constructed a, a golf course at Chris Green Lake.
Right.
Charlottesville Area Mountain Bike Club is just about to embark on a downhill bike area project. They're just funding the whole thing. In each case, the county is providing staff support or in-kind administrative support. But those are some recent examples of more creative, uh, resource. I might be forgetting some though.
No, I think that was exactly what I was going towards. I mean, I've, I've heard a lot of examples of like Charlottesville Mountain Biking Association, how they do the work, how they create the trails. And there's a lot of resources that could be leveraged. And then the last quick question I had, and I heard a statistic somewhere about, um, you know, VDOT, for example, not to throw them under the bus, no pun intended, but VDOT is looking at improving roads. And the, they're also having to, to clearly focus on increasing maintenance funds for every time they build a smart scale plan. So you end up seeing a lot of improvements, a lot of smart scale improvements, but the maintenance line item is staying where it is. What is, what does that look like for parks and, and rec and open space? Maintenance and how, how are you balancing that with the aspirational goals?
Yeah, that's another great question. Um, that is probably best fielded by department leadership who are more directly involved in the budgeting process, but it really, at the end of the day, comes down to requesting more resources, whether that's full-time equivalent positions or operating budget. But as we inherit more trails or more infrastructure.
Exactly.
The need to not only do the routine maintenance, but the inspections, the eventual replacement or upgrades, those all grow, you know, in tandem with the in, increasing assets.
Got it. Okay. And then the last thing I'll mention, just because I have the mic is, um, is an experience that you helped us through. And this is, this is, I, I mean, I'm obviously here as a private citizen, but a project with my job, which was a rezoning. And the partnership that we had with you on the Parks and Rec, I thought was one of the really most fruitful discussions we've had. And it, it showed how as we built out density, improvements would follow with that. It also showed that there was a, you know, a dedication to completing these things in a way that was at a quality level. That was something that the developer was proud to have and would, would want to focus on. And the other thing that I realized is, you know, when you think about developments and you think about traffic generation and okay, that's going to kick out a proffer that tells, tells you, you have to add a stoplight. There's 400 to $500,000 and then you have to add turn lanes and there's another half a million dollars. And then you have to widen the road and there's a, you know, be, before you know it, you've got proffers in the millions. The bang for your buck, in my opinion, from the open space coordination with the developing, development community is huge. And so I think that's a way that we can continue to focus, um, our, I think our efforts in terms of communication with developers and, and continuing that. So.
Yeah. So, so when you say, when you know, so open space is a term of art in our world and we'll be wrestling with open space after six o'clock. So could you just sort of open up a little bit about when you talk about open space? Are you, what, what does that mean in the, in the, in the example that you, yeah, that, yeah, that you've just shared with us?
Well, it's, it's a couple of things. So there's the technical term of open space in a typical zoning process, which would often be land that's left over. So it's things like critical slopes, things under, un, un, unbuildable land, flood plains, things like that. And then there's how do you program these types of amenities within those open spaces? But then there's also the, I hate to call it like the sacrificial open space, but in a sense, it's area that's buildable that strategically makes sense to develop into Parks and Rec. And that, that, that's where I think that value of that land, instead of putting up a whatever multifamily house, you build a park and it's actually an amenity that's worth and carries a value. That answer?
That is, and I was hoping you'd go to the last one, because then again, you're, we're going back to that, that new phrase about leveraging density.
Yeah, exactly.
So you're saying, why do we have the open space? We don't have the open space because it's like the, the ends of the day.
Right.
We have the open space because we're trying to create, create the day.
Yeah, you're creating place.
Have that be the place that it gets created.
And along with that, thinking about diversity in the offering, somebody mentioned that, like, we're not just doing soccer fields and that's it. Or you're not just building a trail that goes through the woods, but you have events, you have activities and you, you know, you activate those, those, those trails.
I, I do have a question. If you, if you're willing, if at some point you're willing to sort of go backwards for a second.
Yeah.
Wide open. So I'm, and I know I have some observations, but I can wait for that. But on page six of your, of your, of your handout, the whole idea, at some point, we're going to have 20 parks. 20, I'm going to name the name, 20 parks in a place that doesn't like to generate income. So I don't even know how you take care of 20 parks. You know, at some point, I think some of those, and that's a, and that's a conversation perhaps for leadership. At some point they should just be woods and they should not be 20 parks. Because there's no way you're ever going to get the funding to maintain 20 pieces of property. It is not going to happen. As you heard me say about Charlotte Humphreys Park, the fact that it took as long and we had such a dedicated partner and making sure that the buttons got pushed for us to get those weeds, or I'm sorry, invasive species and poison ivy, uh, out of there is why it's such a good place. And then I can't see having that kind of energy spread across 20 parks. I just, I don't see how it works. The other thing is that in the southeast and west of our community, there are four community centers. What you're thinking about putting community centers in the north, east and west of our community, as opposed to just having them be in the southeast and west of our community. You gonna have one of yours? You are? Okay. So that's like, how about on the south? How about the north? Since you're getting one, you're getting one. I mean, that was just that sort of the thing about looking at, if we look at community centers, which I think we had a conversation that that's where some of the resilience, those would be resilient tops. But there, we need, we need to think strategically about how we place them in other parts of the county. And so as you're doing what you're doing, you know, I, I would give up three, three future parks for two current communities.
I don't think you have to.
I don't have to do it. I can have it all.
At all.
All right. Good. Good. Thanks.
Why do we have to skip?
I think that, that, I, for me anyway, I think the key is what we've said is just thinking about, and yeah, I knew you're doing this, is thinking about the improvements, the parks, the additions, not, not blindly, without looking at maintenance and impacts there. And if you have to slow down in one column, so you can catch up in the other, you, you know, it's just, I don't know how that's built into the, the chapters, but.
Mr. Just, can I ask?
Yeah.
Two quick ones, just two quick ones. Um, I had two quick comments. I wanted to ask under objective 6.4, you talked about improve and expand river access facilities and amenities. So I just wanted to ask, um, there's access, like spots you can say, get in the river. But are you also talking about improved kayak ramps and canoe ramps so that people can get their boat? Cause we don't really have good quality ones. And also if you think about our aging population, it, it's some of my canoe friends need a little extra help getting that boat in the river. So just thinking about instead of dragging it down the muddy bank or, you know, or a staircase that we actually build proper canoe and kayak launches. All right.
Can I expand that a little bit?
Go ahead. And then I have a totally unrelated comment.
This is a big picture question about public safety and how that's, how that's monitored, how that's cared for. And is that woven into AC 44 in this plan?
Was that specific to river access points or kind of just safety in, in general?
Just in general.
I don't know that it's been a focus topic, um, but it sounds like something that we should maybe go back and make sure that we've touched on that and thought about how to make sure that's a, just an operating principle for all of our parks.
Like along those lines, for example, there's some parks where you could, there's a nice deck and you can fish off of it. But thinking about people again, like in walkers and wheelchairs or disabled veterans who want to be able to get that wheelchair down the ramp and, and on a grade that works and then be able to still fish. So thinking about the different needs populations and as you think about equity and all of that. And I want to make an unrelated question, I mean, comment. So we talked about resilient seeds all over the place. Are we also specifically focused on looking now at our parks, facilities that have even those innocent looking creeks, not just the Ravenna River, uh, that are now flooding. We've had a bunch of park damages here. I actually could have kayaked from my front door last week. Right? One foot from my front door, I could have kayaked off to the rockfish. It was fabulous. Not. I was very, didn't get any sleep, uh, that night. But anyway, the, the point being that, um, our, our infrastructure needs to actually be tougher. Because we have to start building stuff that you, something you didn't think was going to be underwater. Now can be underwater with more regularity. So there are different types of structures. There are buildings that drain. There are, uh, things that are more resilient to being hit by hard wa, fast moving water. So to really start to rethink, uh, our, our facilities in terms of inundation. And in some cases that's moving things back, but in other cases, it's actually buying different types of equipment designing differently. So I'd like to see may, if that, I didn't see that in there. Maybe that, I feel like it's its own analysis that needs to be done. That, that's it.
That's great. Yeah. Maybe if we could focus, um, on objective three, five and six, if you have any comments specific to those objectives. And then maybe the last few minutes, we can just talk a little bit more broadly. Maybe we don't have specific comments here, but just.
I do, I do.
Okay. Why don't we start with?
Sure. Yeah. So the first, I'd, I'd like to say, um, I think you've done a great job, particularly objective five. A lot of things, you know, other people called that out with sustainability. In fact, the, the work parks is already doing with the no mo areas and with invasive species management. It's really great. It's great to see that that, that put in there. You know, I obviously support objective three as well. I think, you know, with a lot of these issues, you know, we've heard a lot of people mention the intersection with, um, with transportation. And there's, there's also in my mind, a pretty big intersection, as I mentioned before, with economic development. And, you know, I think it bears mentioning in this chapter, I think that the billion dollars of economic value that recreation, the recreation economy has in Ammaral. And I, and honestly, I think it's undercounted. I think when we do that park needs assessment, if we do it right, we may find that it's a much larger number than we thought. You know, and just looking at some of the nationwide statistics, I had trouble finding some of the, the things specific to Virginia, but in 2023, 48 million people participated in running nationwide. And, and they spend about $1,800 per year each. When you think about the number of runners now in Ammaral County, that is a lot of money. You, you compare this with soccer, for example, and not to pick on soccer, but it.
But picking on soccer.
Yeah. I mean, it's only, there's only 14 million people who participate in soccer. So it's actually significant less than the number of people who do running. Cycling, um, for example, fell in just below running as, you know, in terms of participation. But, um, that said, while not a sport, um, 96 million people participated in bird watching. Bird watchers spent, spent about 41 billion annually. So I mean, I think you've called that out before.
Yeah, they spend, they're the most spendy outdoor user. So if you, you just call some of your trails, the blah, blah birding trail and put it at little ad in birders magazine, and all of a sudden you've got more people staying for long weekends. The same birds you always had there, mind you.
Yeah.
But you're just calling it out. And we, but maybe providing bird blinds or other, some benches, some other facilities.
Yeah. And there's also the, you know, there's the birding wildlife trail network that I think bears some mention in here. But I think also what, what seems to be really strikingly missing in these, these objectives is, is the role of private lands um, in terms of recreation in Ammaral County. We have a huge number of private landowners who either offer open access or, or limited access or offers for events. They do events. Um, there's Tevin Trails, Foxfield, Panorama Farm, Monticello, Fox Haven. There's the community trails in Batesville that are maintained by community members. You know, and I think we could do more, um, in terms of supporting, um, those, those property owners. Making sure that, you know, from a zoning perspective, those are allowed uses when people do provide those recreational uses. But also helping them just, um, letting them know that the county is supportive of those, those kinds of efforts. And you may, maybe providing some, you know, information about like how to navigate the complexities of doing that, because it's been done, right? And you know, you saw that in Roanoke. That was one of the things that they're, they're doing actively in Roanoke, you know, and really cultivating community partnerships. And I, I would love to see that, that same sort of thing happen here. It's also interesting that we call out, um, blue ways in rural areas. But there's no similar recognition of rural roads actively used by cycling and running. Um, and maybe that's going to end up in the transportation chapter. I certainly hope it does. I saw on those maps, um, route 76, which is insanely dangerous. But no mention of Jarmen's Gap. A highly used road used for, for biking, running and walking that provides access to the Shenandoah National Park right next to Croze. If you go there on any day, you'll see many cars parked there to, to walk, run, or go up that, that. And it's right next to whatever development areas. Also, I think, you know, one of the things that's occurred to me too, is talking to people is there's not really, you know, we don't think about hunting as outdoor recreation, but it is, and it's important for outdoor recreation and sustenance for many people in the rural area. And there's surprisingly not a lot of safe places for people of lower income particularly to, to hunt. And we don't have a wildlife management area in the county. And I've long suggested, while that's not under our purview, we certainly the next, as, you know, as the state open state space plan comes up and we communicate with, you know, with state representatives, like saying that yes, we would like to have a wildlife management area somewhere in Ammaral County. a wildlife management area somewhere in Alamo County. It's something we could do. And there are some large properties owned by Ravenna Water and Sewer that can't be reservoirs, that could be wildlife management areas, just saying.
Make sure we got enough time.
Yeah, yeah, sorry, but. But just generally speaking, I, I think everything that's in here pertaining to the management parks and a lot of the activities in parks is great and, and is spot on. What I'd love to see is a broadening of the scope of, of really what we think of, what we think of recreation, the economic value of recreation and how that ties into the other chapters.
Who else?
So, so I, I would want to wrestle hard about shooting Bambi's in public property. I would, I'd want to have a real big conversation about that, because right now I'm not feeling, given that we're in a building, I couldn't bring a gun in. I don't necessarily think that county's going to want to have some land that you could bring some guns onto. But we can wrestle about that in some other time. I am struck. And, and we've wrestled with this a bit, I'm struck about why we think that, that recreation in Alamo County has a pluralistic approach to it. My, my, my interaction with recreation in Alamo County is that it is absolutely a white glove activity. And there's nothing wrong with white gloves. I had a set for a cotillion way back when. But right now, I don't believe that I would wear a pair. And so I want to be real careful when we talk about what's the economic benefit of something that we're not pitching ourselves towards a level of disequity. Because when I look around town and when, being here is, is, as I sometimes mention, I have seen a retrenching of what used to be the outdoor activity places. I see many few fewer than used to be here. Which leads me to believe, A, I'm getting it brought in by some UPS truck, which is always possible. Or in the way that many people with assets, they go purchase their recreation activity someplace else and then bring it back here. And so that leaves a whole host of people who don't have the, who aren't mobile enough to go and bring a, a bike or bring the various pieces back here that, that they would recreate with in a way that I think would be, be, be helpful. So I want to just, while, while I appreciate what you're saying, I want to be, I want to be careful that we're not putting the economic analysis on our staff, but we're engaging with people who actually do economic analysis around luxury, I'm going to call, I'm intentionally calling recreation a luxury good around that kind of activity and not just assuming that there's going to be an extension and that's going to bring us, that's going to have a multiplier effect for, 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 for the county. I think we already see, we've already seen a multiplier effect when we've looked at the, the movement towards the wedding industry here and how that's become either the second or the third largest sort of economic driver in, in many, in many aspects around here. So I just want to be careful about that. What I will, what I will ask, and so, so I do think we should do it, but I think we should bring, we should bring resources into that discussion whose specialty is looking at those kinds of elements and not just sort of, and not sort of make that, and not do a gut analysis on that, that's, that's where I'm coming from on that.
Yeah, so I, I think. And I hesitate even bringing this example up, but it's, it's something that, that I had in my mind a, a lot. One of the places that, that my daughter and I run, we frequently encounter a black teenager who walks a good mile or more to go fishing. And when I think about, you know, what, you know, transportation, the intersection of transportation and recreation and equity, that image in my mind is, is really, I think, an important one that, that I hold on to. Because making sure that we don't do anything to that road that makes that road unsafe for that teenager to be able to, to fish in that stream. Making sure that we acknowledge that that is a form of recreation that we support in Alamo County. We don't do anything to that waterway to make it so contaminated that they can't fish there. So I think, when I think about expanding our notion of how we think of recreation, how we think of diversity and how it interconnects with these things, I think it's.
That sits with you, and I appreciate it. I, I'm sure that there are white teenagers who also walk that one mile. So I, I'm not quite sure that the, the race of the individual who's doing the walking was, was, was helpful to the example. But, you know, I'll let it slide on this one. But if we can go back to the, the sort of the, the bird's eye view, what I was thinking about at this one point, I'm thinking about,
Your mic, yeah.
So are you looking at the whole idea that across twenty-nine, there's going to be this pedestrian bridge? That pedestrian bridge across twenty-nine can get you to the Charlotte Humphreys Park. That pedestrian bridge across twenty-nine can get you to, and I hope they do, as I'm going to call them out.
They use it.
That's right, I hope they use it. But I hope RWSA, I think with the, the bike club, supposedly putting paths behind the Jack Jewett and Journey and the Boys Club, the Boys and Girls Club to connect up to, to come across to, to your part of the world, to like the Barracks Road or whatever, Garth Road over there, that if you keep going, and this is where, this is where it breaks down. The bridge over twenty-nine can't get you to Ivy Creek Natural Area right now. Can't get you to the boat, the boat launch over there on the reservoir. But if it could, those are six different places that would be unlocked just because of the bridge going over twenty-nine.
Right.
And so as you think, so as we think about sort of our, our infrastructure, that we think about where do these pieces, what do they unlock? So that people can in fact use these things in our community in ways that they hadn't been able to use them before.
I would just like sort of a little commentary on top of that, which is, yes. And wouldn't it be great to build all of that? And it also takes a little like ranking and a little prioritization and trying to identify some of these major destinations we need to get to. And making some choices about where we're going to invest our money. I think that's important to also put in that too.
Yes, sir.
I was going to go on a whole different track and I, I think someone reminded us that, that this is the AC forty-four, it's looking out twenty years. And so I was honestly looking at it before, I'm pretty happy that we're talking about urban parks as the main thing. I'm happy that we're talking about, you know, that kind of urban style amenities in the urban ring. And also, since we are looking out further, I, I, I grew up in a town that, that had a couple of really truly destination parks, urban parks that were really destinations.
You say where that was?
Uh, yeah, Huntington, West Virginia.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
Ritter Park was, is classic, it's like, you know, sort of Edwardian, sort of, it's fantastic. And if we're looking out ahead twenty years, I would really like us to think about a, a destination sort of place. If you think about kind of our region, where are there going to be festivals right now? You know, the Pavilion, which isn't even a park, it's just concrete, Ix Art Park, which is private. A couple of the parks in town can hold festivals, but you know, you don't really think I'm that way. I would really like us to think about how can we create a space that can be that kind of destination? In the way that a lot of our rural parks are destinations, you know, Ivy Creek, you go there, it's great, it's beautiful, you walk on trails. Chris Green Lake or Mid Springs Lake, you go there with your kids, you swim, whatever. But to have that kind of urban style destination, I think we, we don't have that really in the plan in the way that I would love to be aspirational and think toward. And I was looking at the CACV B's master plan that you referenced, I thank you for, for reminding me that they were doing that work. And arts and music, which is very near and dear to my heart and my work, is not a primary thing that they've got in their plan, but as far as a, a primary tourism draw, however, there is so much music in this town and people come here and buy tickets to things all the time. And there's a lot of artists doing work and we have something like a thousand people, full-time equivalent that do work in the arts. And so, you know, how could we, and maybe this sort of planning process incorporate arts into our parks? And, and think about some kind of arts collective to develop a foundational strategy for arts and cultural programming in the parks. And I think that's maybe where sort of my, my philosophy of parks does, if you're off a little bit, it's like, yeah, nature connection is lovely, but really I want programming in the parks.
Yeah, I was, just along those lines, I, one of my notes I wrote was like, you know, getting more people into parks and even like people aren't traditionally park goers. Like some cities do like geocaching events. People want to go on a treasure hunt, you know? And so they go to the park to do that thing and while they're there, like this was fun, like I might come back to this park next weekend just to come here. So, so some of those more fun events, yes, they take staff time and programming and I understand that, but that's, those kinds of things can also be sponsored by local businesses and things. So just making more like sort of unusual or kite flying festivals or just more fun stuff that break art in the parks, I like that a lot.
You've got Objective one point seven, which is getting to that. And maybe there's a way to kind of enhance that a little bit to cover a lot of what, what we're saying. I just realized a lot of what we're talking about is really an Objective one, which is good partnerships, funding, resources, things like that, they're there. So that's great. Any other comments on Objective three, five and six? I just had a couple of minutes of recap if. But I don't want to cut off, we got time. Any other?
I, I, I mean, I just threw in some like ideas about, you know, resiliency features you could add, like solar panels on tops of buildings and just, you know, doing more with our facilities to actually build in that resiliency component.
I think the only thing I would add too is that I, I hope that when we do the, the needs assessment, not only do we think more broadly, but we also include data from Strava. Because that's a, a great measure of, of where recreation activities are happening throughout the cotton county. So.
That's great. So I just had a few, just recap, things that we've heard in a list. Just, and I, probably it's not comprehensive and it's not in any order, but it's just some things to remember. One is just that consideration of maintenance alongside the, and however the county can help with that. The other is the regional perspective and thinking, you know, it's great to think about our county, which is super important because that's why we're here and it's what we love. There's also, I think, opportunities around the fringe, the edges that maybe with other communities could even expand the opportunity for interconnections. Leveraging partnerships, we talked about a lot, whether that's with developers, grant funds, Cambic, things like that, that have things to offer. Ensuring that our resources, so not only the maintenance piece, but that our staffing, I think you had mentioned that in some of your comments. And other resources are in line with the vision for the parks and recreation goals. Focusing at least or considering in each case, safety as part of it and, and accessibility is, is important. Thinking about the activation of spaces within each of the parks and what that means in terms of its diversity and what the experience is that you have when you're in those spaces. Because if you have a hundred spaces that are one thing and you have two that are another, it maybe gets a little off and it'd be nice to make sure you've got that, that mix as much as possible. Links to economic development, I think we heard a few times, which is really important and I know that's a focus of you all. Let's see, leveraging density, love that phrase, it's going to be in the news, that was a good one, I think remembering that is important. Ensuring that our goals are measurable and achievable and focusing on the fact that we have not only a twenty-year plan, but we have some sub-plans that go below that, that are all maybe a little more in, you know, in the minutia and are things that actually allow it to activate. Talked about resilience, sustainability and equity. So those are kind of the things that jumped out anyway at me, I'm sure I missed some, but. So thank you, everybody. Thank you, staff, for great, great work session and conversation and look forward to the next time.
Thank you all.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thank you all so much, very thoughtful.
I will put us into recess until six P M. I will put us into recess until six P M. Waiting for that echo. Sorry. I'll start by establishing a quorum. Could you call the role, please?
Mr. Missile.
Here.
Mr. Curazona.
Here.
Ms. Firehawk.
Here.
Mr. Murray.
Here.
Mr. Bivens.
Here.
Mr. Moore.
Present and accounted for.
And Mr. Clayburn is not here tonight.
Thank you. We will begin with uh, public comment on matters pending before the commission, but not listed. For public hearing on this agenda, and I have a sign up sheet. There are eight people on the sign up sheet this evening. If you could come forward, you will have three minutes to speak. You will not be able to relinquish your three minutes to another speaker or any portion thereof. Individuals can only sign up. One person to speak and please give any written statements that you might have to the clerk. And so we, we will start with Judy Berger and if Kristen, I think it's Jones could be ready. Will be able to move forward. Thank you.
Hello.
Hello. State your name and general low resident, location of residence, please.
Move the microphone to my mouth so you can hear.
Perfect.
Lean a little too and look lazy.
Thank you.
I'm Judy Berger. Uh, I live in the Samuel Miller district. And I support horseback riding. Trail riding specifically in Biscuit Run. Um, I wish the folks from Parks and Rec were here to hear us speak because I, I think. They need to hear us speak, so we'll just harass them another time. Uh, I also own loose horse mobile tack exchange. We buy and sell saddles, tack and clothing for horseback riding. Our business benefits from a vibrant youth population. At least a third of our business comes from kids who ride horses. Um, and they will likely ride as adults. And many of them will stay in this county and want to keep their horses in this county. And buy all the things that we buy when we own horses. Um, I also own and ride horses for which I purchase products and service from fellow Albemarle residents and businesses. And while bird watchers may spend eighteen hundred dollars a year, we spend at least eighteen hundred dollars a month. So that's money. Taxes and things that really benefit the county. The Virginia State Park Plan for Biscuit Run uh, includes verbiage for developing horseback riding trails. The county also referenced horseback riding trails in uh, the twenty fifteen comp plan. We really encourage you to move forward with those plans. Put it in the verbiage, make it happen. Support the industry that we have going so strongly here in Albemarle. And also um, the improvements um. With the intention of, you know, a wider and more diverse population that is coming in to enjoy Biscuit Run. Please include horseback riding in your plans. Thank you.
Thank you. Kristen Jones and Shawnee Baker is on deck.
Hi, my name is Kristen Jones and I live in Batesville and I am also. Horseback rider in um, in Albemarle County. Albemarle County has a huge equestrian heritage, as I think. Everyone knows um. We're probably one of the top five or six counties in the state um, for horseback riding and just the number of horses, number of horseback riders. It's just integral to this county. And um, and is really very important. So we would. Really like to, to continue to be part of the big picture um, in Albemarle County and. That certainly would include um, being able to ride in our parks. We have only two, two parks now in, in Albemarle. Um, and none of them are close to the Biscuit Run area, so. That would be a really nice um, area for. Um, and just fill a really huge need um, to be able to. Uh, ride in, in Biscuit Run. We understand that it was in the, the plan originally when, when it was meant to be a state park. And so the, the. Horseback riders have been basically waiting for quite a long time for that and. Have been very hopeful to have um, have that ability to go ride in Biscuit Run Park. So we're, we're requestful, we're uh, asking that. That we um, that the riding trails at Biscuit Run um, be kept in the master plan and. And we thank you for your. Your uh, attention to that. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Shawnee Baker and Mark. I think it's. Gebhard. Is on deck. Gebhard. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Shawnee Baker. I live in the Whitehall district. I'm speaking on behalf of the equine industry in central Virginia. I have managed a busy tax store for eighteen years here right in Charlottesville. Virginia has a very large equine community and many travel to our local area drawn by our facilities. The horse enthusiasts who come from all over Virginia shop, buy gas, stay in town for lunch. Ride at the available facilities. And all the parks and they're responsible for increasing the tax revenue for our community. The local riding programs, farms and parks are a big draw for riders from all over Virginia and we want to continue to welcome them. The success of Pretty Creek and Pleasant Grove and others in this area prove the importance of these facilities. And I want to encourage the board to focus on developing horseback riding. At Biscuit Run Park as was originally contemplated in the original Virginia State Park Plan. Thank you for considering this.
Thank you. Mark Gebhard and Lynn Gebhard is on deck.
Good evening, distinguished board members. I'm Mark Gebhard, a resident of Scottsville district of Albemarle County. I'm an equine business owner. Our business represents over seven hundred equine enthusiasts. I'm also a horse farm owner, a retired military officer and a professional engineer. Today's comments are in reference to the AC forty four appendix B parks. Recreation open space. Objective one says plan for the parks and recreation needs of current and future community members through a. Planning process that is equitable, inclusive. And responsible to existing and emerging needs. Objective four says increase access. To county parks and trails with an emphasis on inclusion, equity and universal. Access. Action six point one construct and maintain sustainable new trails for hiking, mountain biking. And horseback riding, providing a variety of trail options for different trail users. Given Biscuit Run is the largest park, the equine community is requesting. This board direct the staff to add the equine trails back into the park. The parks plan clearly outlines inclusion, but excludes. This activity from Biscuit Run Park. The plan clearly outlines equity and equality throughout. Yet only two of the fifteen county parks. Include equine activities on the trails. You should be aware the trails are shared with hikers and bikers at Pretty and Byron Parks, which in my view is at no added cost. Something that strikes me as odd about this planning process. The strict, the staff is developing various sections of plan. Without the benefit of completing the economic development section. It would seem logical, the economic development plan would be the primary driver to the AC forty four comprehensive plan. This plan, the twenty fifteen plan, I understand was a nine hundred page plan. Which in my view would make a better boat anchor than a planning tool. I recommend you take your new plan and try to distill it down to fifty pages. So do you have something you can actually use? Another area of uh, improvement is develop metrics which track the accomplishments and goals outlined and provide an objective measure of success. To do this, the objectives and actions need to be quantified, specific, measurable and achievable. Objectives cover numerous parks. There is insufficient funds to cover all the parks. Therefore, there should be a priority for funding. And the priority should be public knowledge. Thank you.
Thank you. Lynn Gebhard and Liz King is on deck. Evening.
Hi, my name is Lynn Gebhard. I've lived in Albemarle County on the same farm. The South Southern District, Scottsville District for. Uh, fifty seven years. And. Uh, the governor has. By virtue of authority vested. By the constitution of Virginia and the governor. Of the Commonwealth of Virginia, there is hereby officially recognized. Virginia Horse Day of the Horse. Whereas the industry directly contributes over one point three billion. To the state's economy. So everyone here representing or. Please stand up. About Biscuit Run. Thank you. We are. Requesting the Board of Supervi- Supervisors. Direct the staff to add the horse trails back into Biscuit Run. Focus on developing horseback riding trails at Biscuit Run. As originally contemplated in the Virginia State Park Plan. So. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I made it under my three minutes.
You did.
Happy about that.
Thank you. Liz King and then Lucia Evans Morse.
Hi, my name is Liz King and I own Millington Stables in the Whitehall district. Our farm has been in continual operation since nineteen sixty nine. And I have been there for thirty seven years. We have brought continual revenue into the community for fifty five years, even during COVID. We currently offer more than eighty riding lessons per week. Each of those lesson families add value to the community. By supporting the feed suppliers, stacks, tax stores, farriers. Veterinarians, farm workers, equipment manufacturers. Tractor repair. And all the industries associated with riding programs. Our program is varied and offers beginner lessons, horse shows, hunting, trail riding, gymnast. We utilize all the facilities in the area. We go to Pretty Creek and Pleasant Grove. I am very distressed to see that the plans for Biscuit Run. Park have changed and I want to encourage the board to focus on developing horseback riding trails. At Biscuit Run. Park as originally contemplated by the Virginia State Park. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And uh, Anne Wicks. Did I skip one? I'm sorry. Lucia Evans. Hi, Morse.
Hello, thank you so much. My name is Lucia Evans Morse and I live in Southern Albemarle District and at Colonna Farm. I'm a county resident and farm owner and we have been at that farm since the 1960s. My husband and I run a horse boarding and breeding operation that was established by my late mother in 1984. I'm concerned about our communities, equine communities' land use reevaluation. Currently, I have 10 horses boarding on my farm. This income offsets taxes and maintenance of the farm and allows me to keep it as open farming space. If my property is no longer deemed as land use, I will not be able to afford the taxes and will be forced to sell. Along with land use eligibility for the equine community, we need to focus on developing horseback riding trails at Biscuit Run as originally contemplated in the Virginia State Park Plan. Our farms are disappearing at an alarming rate. The county needs to be supportive of the equine community and how we nurture and preserve our open land. Once it's gone, it's not coming back. So thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you very much. And Anne Wicks is the last person I have on my list.
Hello, my name is Anne Wicks and I live in Southern Albemarle in the Samuel Miller District. I've lived there for 33 years. I'm here to request that there be a focus on developing horseback riding trails at Biscuit Run, again as originally contemplated in the Virginia State Park Plan. I am one of many horse owners in Albemarle County whose primary recreational outlet is trail riding. I am incredibly grateful for the two county parks, Patricia Byram and Preity Creek, that provide shared multi-use horse trails, a model that has proven to be quite successful. However, their locations are on the northern boundaries of the county, making access difficult and time-consuming for many county residents wishing to trail ride at either location. The road to Patricia Byram is twisty and narrow in places, so not ideal if pulling a horse trailer, especially along some sections if one were to encounter a large truck or school bus coming the other way. Preity Creek's location provides safer access and is ideal for equestrians who live north of Charlottesville, as well as for those living north of Albemarle County. In fact, this location perhaps better serves our northern neighbors who have easier access than it does a large portion of Albemarle equestrians, particularly those living south of I-64. I am one of those who live south of I-64. And though I live only 27 and a half miles away from Prety Creek, it takes at least an hour to get there due to the stoplights and the traffic on the 29 North corridor. The travel time, along with navigating 29 North while pulling a horse trailer through some of the heaviest traffic in the area, is a deterrent to riding there. Being centrally located, Biscuit Run would provide easier and safer access for equestrians traveling from throughout many parts of the county, and I should add the state, and especially for those living south of I-64. Horses are in... Does that mean I'm done?
No, you have a minute.
Quick, I've talked.
Plenty of time.
As has already been pointed out, horses are integral to the historical and cultural fabric of our county and contribute a tremendous amount economically. In the current Parks Recreation Open Spaces draft, action 6.1 of Objective Six states, "Construct and maintain sustainable new trails for hiking, mountain biking, and horseback riding, providing a variety of trail options for different trail users." Equestrian trails at Biscuit Run would certainly support that action. Also, in the Rural Area section of the 2015 Albemarle Comprehensive Plan, Strategy 1F of Objective One states, "Study ways in which the county can better support the local horse industry." I do not know what progress has been made in addressing Strategy 1F, but ensuring that equestrians in Albemarle County continue to have access to trails would go a long way to helping support the county's goals. Thank you.
Perfect timing. Thank you. That was the, Ms. Wicks was the last person on my list. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this matter or any other matters that are not on our agenda this evening? We do have one online?
Yep.
Okay, great. Before we go there, anybody here? Being none, we'll go online. Thank you.
Tabitha, could you please unmute yourself? You will have three minutes to speak.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Um, you know, I just, I didn't have anything prepared, but I'm a local equestrian, living near Belmont. And the same thing that others have brought up, just it's really dangerous and scary driving up 29 to try to get to Prety Creek with four lanes of traffic. We really need something on the south side and it's such a large space that it would be really nice to have the horse trails there. And that's all I have to say. I've just, I've been listening for the whole meeting.
Great, thanks. Thanks for your thoughts. Is there anyone else online?
Yes. Mary, can you unmute? Can you have three minutes to speak?
Ma'am, we can't hear you if you're speaking.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, now we can hear you. Thanks.
Oh, okay, great. Yeah, my name is Mary Jane Strickland. I live in the Aventity subdivision, which is actually right next to Biscuit Run. And I moved into Aventity subdivision. One of the reasons was I was so excited that there was going to be a park nearby that was going to allow horseback riding on the trails because we don't have anything south of Charlottesville. I do have a horse board and I board him south of Charlottesville. I would be so excited if we could put that back in. I hadn't heard much about it over the years, but until I heard that it had been taken out. But I know many of the other people that I board with have been talking about it and we'd really like to see that put back in under discussion to allow horse riding in Biscuit Run.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Anyone else? No? All right. I think we're done with these comments. Thank you all for your passionate and thoughtful words. We're grateful for that. And a couple of you, maybe three or four, addressed us as the board. And I think you know this, but just a reminder, we are not the Board of Supervisors. We're the Planning Commission. If you have these thoughts and concerns, I would certainly bring them to the Board of Supervisors as well. So thank you very much. All right, we'll move on to the items, well, consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Or would anyone like to call one up or two up?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All right, can we have the roll, please?
Who is the second? I'm sorry, I couldn't hear.
Commissioner Carazana.
Thank you. Mr. Missile?
Aye.
Mr. Carazana?
Aye.
Ms. Firehawk?
Aye.
Mr. Murray?
Aye.
Mr. Bivens?
Aye.
And Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we have two items that are requesting deferral. The first is SP 2024-1, Crowsey Independence Day Celebration. They're requesting deferral to a date specific of March 11th, 2025. Do I have a motion?
Yes, I move to defer SP 2024-1, Crowsey Independence Days Celebration.
Great.
And that would be a motion to defer until March 11th.
Correct.
Is there a second?
Second, great. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Missile?
Aye.
Mr. Carazana?
Aye.
Ms. Firehawk?
Aye.
Mr. Claiborne? Oh, he's not here. Mr. Murray?
Aye.
Mr. Bivens?
Aye.
And Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Thank you.
Awesome. We have a second request for deferral, SP 2024-22, Living Earth School to a date specific of March 11th, 2025. It's going to be a busy Planning Commission meeting. Do we have a motion?
I move to, I move to accept the applicant's request to deferral to March 11th, 2025 for the Living Earth School.
Do a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, can we call the roll, please?
Mr. Missile?
Aye.
Mr. Carazana?
Aye.
Ms. Firehawk?
Aye.
Mr. Murray?
Aye.
Mr. Bivens?
Aye.
And Mr. Moore?
Aye.
All right, moving on to the public hearings. We will begin with ZMA 2024-4, Flow Toyota and Mercedes Slopes Rezoning, and I'll ask for the staff report.
Thank you. I'm Rebecca Ragsdale and I am Planning Manager in the Planning Division. And once we have our screen, thank you, I'll take you through this presentation. This is a rezoning request specific to the steep slopes overlay district. And there's a request to amend those slopes from preserved to managed. And then also there is a request to remove proffers associated with the 2016 rezoning that has been made in conjunction with this request. So those slopes we'll be discussing this evening are shown as yellow and green on your screen. And I will orient you to the property and then we will circle back to this exhibit. But there are three properties involved and the slopes are located at the rear of the property that's shown as wooded. 1357 is one of those flow properties and it is on Richmond Road with Carriage Hill condos behind it and then surrounded by commercial or undeveloped properties along that corridor of Pantops, which all of the red is highway commercial. And also the purple is commercial zoning. And then the brown at Carriage Hill is R15 residential. So three sides surrounded by commercial zoning and then to the rear on the other side of the slopes, the Carriage Hill residential development. This is the Pantops Master Plan. The red is commercial mixed use. The brown is community mixed use. And then the green is green space. Parks and, part of the Parks and Green System recommendation consistent with slopes that are proposed to be amended. Here is the exhibit or the concept. It's not necessarily a concept plan. It's the exhibit to show the areas that are proposed for rezoning. The yellow is managed slopes that was already part of a prior action. In 2016, that prior action left these preserved slopes in green to remain. And as part of that action, we, the county accepted a proffer that was offered by the developer at the time for the rear of these parcels, 14 and 14E, to preserve 2.47 acres or 2.42 acres of that area in the back that was adjacent to the intermittent stream. And we have some maps that show the specifics in terms of topography and the intermittent stream at the rear of the parcel. This is also shown on their exhibit. And then this gives you more of the context of the system there located on that hillside in Pantops, which does, is located north of South Pantops Drive and near the Ravanna River. So when we look at these requests, we are looking specifically at the criteria in the ordinance for managed slopes and preserved slopes. Those are included in your packet and we responded to them specifically in terms of staff's analysis. We did not find that they met the majority of the managed slopes. But what we did find was that they met the majority of the preserved slopes in terms of the contiguous area, a budding a water feature, part of that Pantops hillside system, which is mentioned throughout the master plan. It's not, the slopes themselves are not called out specifically, but in terms of the comprehensive plan, well, they are called out in terms of reference to the hillside system, but it's also the land use designations for that portion of the properties is Parks and Green Systems. And it was, they are preserved by prior action in terms of the proffer that was accepted. So our recommendation was based on our analysis that we recommended denial of the application as it submitted and proposed to rezone the entirety of those preserved slopes to manage and also remove the proffer. We did note in the staff report that, provided some more detailed information and updated exhibit, we may be able to support some narrowly focused provisions to an area around the existing stormwater facility. But that's not what's before you this evening. We would need a revised concept plan if we were to amend or change our recommendation. So I will pause for any questions and this is not Berkmar Flats. This is definitely the steep slope overlay district rezoning.
Great, thank you. Any questions for staff?
Well, just sort of one that the last part of your presentation sort of begs is if we could look at the map again real quick, just hypothetically, if there were a site plan that only covered that smaller portion, could you point out maybe the closer in map even? I was wondering if you could, yeah, there you go. I was wondering if you could point out about where that part would be that...
It's those at the rear of 14A.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions for staff?
There was one of the slides with words on it and you, I was trying to follow you and you clicked really fast, so just...
Which, which?
I can't, it was like a list of sentences and the last sentence I couldn't read and you said it really quick. Can you just go back real quick?
Okay, so we went through the managed slopes criteria and then I had the...
Yeah, it was this, I just, okay. Okay, thank you.
All right, I went too fast.
Yeah, this wasn't, I mean, I obviously read the staff report, but I just want to make sure I didn't miss that point. That's it.
Yeah, any other questions?
Can you go back to the, to the map showing the slopes?
I'm sorry, I couldn't.
The slope map you wanted to see again?
You just had it, you just had it up.
The other one or?
Yeah, so.
Yeah, the zoom in.
I think I understood what you said, but the, the managed slope that's showing there in between the two preserved slopes, so that was changed in what year again?
It was a 2016 amendment to the overlay district.
And can you summarize it? So what was the, what was the logic to move it to a managed slope? I'm just wondering because they seem to all have the same characteristics or in the same... So what was the, I know they gave a proffer, but what was the, was it just as they gave a proffer or?
No, sir, that, there was prior, there was disturbance of that area without site plan approval. So it was actually a violation of the steep slopes overlay district that had already occurred. So at that point, it was, the decision was made to rezone it to manage. There might have been a small area, I believe, that was a correction or revisiting it. We also agreed should be managed, but that was one of the factors. The rezoning was necessary to address an outstanding violation.
It already, it already been impacted?
Yes.
By some, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just a comment, that seems kind of like a perverse incentive, you know, like someone goes and violates the, the...
Now we'll make it easy to do it again.
Yeah, but you know, like, oh, well, we successfully converted it to the managed from preserved.
Sure, can I ask?
Yeah.
So, so Ms. Ragsdale? Ms. Ragsdale, could I, could you just circle, which slopes are we, are you, are you asking us to consider tonight?
It may be helpful if I go back to the application plan, but the slopes that are under consideration are on these three parcels. So it includes the rear 14A and then the preserved slopes along the property line of 14. We've talked about the managed slopes already that were changed on the...
We're not looking into, we're not looking to change the characteristics of the yellow slope as it, right tonight?
No, that would remain managed.
Okay, okay, I'm with you so far. Thank you. Keep going. Thank you, keep going.
And then these are the preserved slopes at the rear of 14E.
And thank you, that's, that's very helpful. And then can you show where the, the water management?
That the, well, there is no water protection ordinance buffer that's showing on the critical resources layer, because that, the stream buffer is not a requirement of intermittent streams.
Okay, but when you walk the property, there is something that looks like it's a water catchment basement down in the bottom of all that stuff.
There's, there is the intermittent stream, there are some springs and some other things you may observe in the field when you go out there.
Oh, that's interesting, because I walked the, behind the Toyota place, so there's a, there's an asphalt paving between the Mercedes dealership and the Toyota dealership. And if you sort of go to where those two, that boundary line comes, and you look over, it actually looks like the kind of thing that we see, the kind of water treatment, or you have a, you have a term for this, and I always mess up.
Yeah, so.
Biofilter.
Yeah, it looks like something like that. Doesn't look like it happened because of water running, it looked like something happened because someone dug it out.
Right, there are, there has been prior disturbance back there that you may see some stormwater facilities that, you know, we've referenced the ones, there, there are some stormwater facilities that are located where preserved slopes are designated, there may be also some where it's designated managed. Our engineering staff has walked the site, if you have any specific questions about that. It might be helpful if I go back to this one, I'm not certain, but I think that may cover all of your questions. I'm not sure exactly where you were on the site, but the applicant may have something that clarifies that as well.
There's a follow-up question to that or along the same lines. Did you say that there are some stormwater management facilities that are adjacent to both managed and preserved slopes?
Yes, and that's, I didn't put all of that in the packet, that's what the applicant provided, all of the exhibits from the prior history of site plans. So we do have instances, and if you turn on the layers in our GIS, there are a number of preserved slopes, part of this zoning district, that are adjacent to stormwater facilities. So that isn't necessarily a criteria where we said, oh, they must all be managed.
Sure, although there is maybe greater possibility that they're actually, really could be considered managed because the slopes were created for the stormwater management facilities?
So we, we have looked at them in terms of this application and acknowledged that just for the, the portion that's on the.
Yeah.
The Mercedes site.
That's, that was what you said at the end of your presentation, right? 14A is?
Yes.
And, and read, that was my next question was, can you clarify what you were saying there? Are you saying that they would need to submit a revised plan that shows the impacts to that area with stormwater management, so that you would consider that as a managed slope? I'm trying to figure that out.
We don't have a plan.
Yeah.
For you to take action on that defines the area that would change from preserved to managed.
I see.
So.
So there's a plan I'm looking at, and maybe this is a question for the applicant, which I'm happy to ask, but there's sheet nine of 14 in their application that shows a plan with the stormwater facility and it's labeled storm slopes, slopes designated as preserved, but it's a stormwater management part. And I, I just want to clarify, I think that's one of the areas they're looking to reclassify as managed, right?
Yes.
So if we have number six of, or number nine of 14, do we need something more than that to, is that what you're saying?
They haven't, they haven't proposed a narrow request.
They're basically just showing evidence of a past disturbance.
I think maybe the best way to put it is, right now, the current proposal in front of you is, all of the slopes that you see on there are proposed to be designated managed in the current request.
But we don't have a plan that shows how they're going to be used, or?
No.
Okay.
They have indicated it would be, allow for expansion of parking areas, but what we would be looking for is a, a detailed accounting based on the square footage that would change, and this type of exhibit as well.
I see.
Not just referencing prior site plans.
So you're really asking for more information before you can make a judgment as to whether they can be changed from preserved to managed?
Yes.
And you probably asked this, the applicant, for that information at one point?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? All right, with that, we'll open the public hearing, turn it over to the applicant for the presentation. Thank you. So nice to be able to see that number.
I've got a lot to say, so I want to make sure I.
You're just gonna hide it?
Okay, I gotta, I gotta know, know what I have here.
We hear the buzzer.
Good evening, Chair Missel, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Kelsey Schlein, I'm a planner with SHIMP Engineering. I'm here tonight representing Flow 1381 Richmond LLC and Flow 1357 Richmond LLC, who are the property owners of these three parcels that are subject to these, this redesignation request. Flow Automotive Group operates their Flow Toyota facility and their Flow Mercedes facilities on these properties. Also, here with me tonight is Justin Shimp, the engineer for the project, and Paulina Andrevah, who is a planner in my office, also working on this project. So, all right, so the site context here, you all are familiar with this, and Pantops to the east, we have the Rivanna Ridge Shopping Center further up the hill, down the hill, we have the, the Free Bridge and crossing the Rivanna River moving west toward Trail and Spill. A little bit of background about Flow and kind of the reasoning, the, the why we're, we're here tonight and requesting this redesignation of slopes. So a background of the company, the company's operated in Admiral County since 2003. They have 15 franchises in Admiral County, more than 426 employees employed in Admiral County, and they are dealerships serve the entire region. And they also have a significant investment that they've, that they've made in this area. The, I think this application tonight really represents the struggle at the intersection of multiple planning and land use interests. We have a site that's been used for automobile sales for the past 50 years and a changing automobile industry where automobile service is becoming a paramount component of the dealership business that demands more space from the manufacturers than dealerships in the past. Both Flow Toyota and Flow Mercedes are currently sites that are non-compliant per manufacturer specifications. That is the reason that we are here before you tonight. And so we're requesting this redesignation of slopes on the property from preserved to manage to permit expansion of these dealerships. And please note that any outdoor storage and display will require an additional special use permit, and so we will, we would be back before you again if any of those areas were designated for outdoor storage and display, if this request was approved. Just kind of hopping back into my slide order here, you all went through the comp plan designation. I also just wanted to call out this blue line here is, is a potential for a future roadway connection as well. And so that's, you know, something that would also necessitate disturbance of these slopes, and, you know, maybe is something that could be considered in the future on this site, and, and might become a little more feasible if the, if the terrain is a little more amenable to those type of improvements in the future. So as Rebecca noted, the, the request that we have before you tonight is for a redesignation of all of the preserved slopes on these three properties. And we met with staff, and one item that I want to call attention to is the last comment letter that we received prior to requesting that this application go forward to the Planning Commission, called out that there was, staff does not have concerns about the request to designate the slopes on two of the parcels, 7814A and 7814, to manage slopes. And so that was the comment that we received, and I think that this comment, and also the staff report that we have, just kind of going back to one of my opening statements about this application really being a struggle at the intersection of multiple planning interests of slopes preservation, economic development. And I think just because of, with this application kind of changing hands and moving through the county, the county process, there's been some, as staff has gathered more information, there's been some alternative conclusions pulled to. And I just want to call out those two slopes that, those slopes areas that were mentioned in that comment letter, we're looking at all of these slopes here that we had, had thought that we might have a favorable review of kind of coming into the Planning Commission meeting. So after that comment was issued, after staff put together their staff report, we had a few conversations with staff about what they might be supportive of after we kind of knew where the direction was going with, with staff's recommendation. And so we understand that staff is supportive of the redesignation of slopes in this area. And we went back and we did some further investigation out on the site, and we especially wanted to go out to the site after some wet conditions, because in the 2016 rezoning, the mention of an intermittent stream comes up repeatedly in that 2016 rezoning. And so we wanted to go out after wet conditions, take some pictures, and, and see what we were left with, and especially identify the intermittent stream, and consider how we might modify our request through the lens of protecting the slopes that are within 100 feet of the intermittent stream, even though that stream doesn't have a buffer designated or wouldn't, doesn't have a buffer affiliated with it because it's intermittent in the development areas, and then looking to potentially redesignate the rest of the slopes outside of that area as managed. And so I have some slides that show that in a little more detail. I'm pulling up some geolocated images here. And so we'll go through these five images that we have just to orient you to the site. Image one, this is at the top of the hill at the kind of break line between the preserved and managed slopes. And so you can see that the characteristics of these looks largely the same, other than the managed slopes, there's a bamboo grove growing in that area. Going to image two, so now we're on the rear of parcel 14E. So there is clear evidence of, of previous disturbance in these slopes areas, we have a culvert outfall, we also have some fill material evident in the slope side here. And image three, this is, so again, we're kind of, so we're over in this area here, we're behind the Toyota parking lot now. This is the portion of the site where an eroded gully from a storm pipe that comes from across 250 outfalls, and then kind of erodes out into a constructed channel and ditch. So this is the constructed channel that runs behind the property, and then this is kind of the key image here. Image five, there's a tulip poplar, and then there's clearly a spring where, which is clearly the start of an intermittent stream. And so after we met with staff and kind of discussed and understood that they might be supportive of redesignating the slopes that were constructed as part of the stormwater facility to serve Mercedes, but still had hesitations to redesignate the slopes that run further south and east along that property line, we did further investigation to identify where the stream is, locate that. And then I, I think we can come to a, a happy medium here where it makes sense to us to keep these slopes on 14E and any slopes within 100 feet of the start of the stream as preserved, and then our request to redesignate the remainder of the slopes. And I'm going to skip through these slides, and I can come back to them if we have time. But what I wanted to call out is the 15,704 square feet that we think demonstrate characteristics of managed slopes compared as opposed to preserved, and then leave these slopes, the remainder of these, and I have an 100-foot buffer offset here that shows 100 feet off of the start of the stream, and all of these slopes remaining as preserved. And so I think that this kind of, and since I have one minute left, I'm going to hop back into all of these slides and the, showing evidence of prior disturbance in these slopes. And so this, right now, we're looking at the Mercedes site plan, and so we're looking at an overlay of the Mercedes site plan on the critical slope, on, on the preserve, excuse me, steep slopes overlay map, to kind of show exactly, and this is the hook that the county's talking about on this parcel, to show exactly how that stormwater facility aligns with where the preserved slopes are designated, those are manmade slopes in that area. And we also wanted to pull the adjacent site plan. This is the former auto superstore, current honey car site, showing grading up to the property line here. And we also, I also wanted to pull Carriage Hill from across the way, which additionally shows, you know, these slopes, which are part of the larger slope system, all being previously disturbed and constructed slopes. Several more, more information I can go into, but I'll leave that into the five minutes for response. I welcome any questions you guys have, and thank you so much for the opportunity.
Great, that was a very helpful presentation, thanks. Do we have any questions for the applicant who would like to kick us off?
Sure, so if these were redesignated, and the, the property was developed, I mean, that, the intermittent stream there flows right to the Rivanna. How is the stormwater going to be treated in this, this new area that's going to be presumably developed to keep pollutants from going straight into that intermittent stream and then dumped right into the Rivanna?
Yeah, absolutely. And I would, I would say, I mean, I think this is kind of one of those, those scenarios where we, we definitely understand the sensitivity of this area, and we understand the sensitivity of the context of the site to the Rivanna River. And I, you know, I think there's potentially an opportunity here, and, you know, I want to say this on the record, and so however we can present that of, of some onsite treatment for, so instead of purchasing nutrient credits for additional disturbance, we could, you know, incorporate stormwater facilities that provide onsite treatment instead of purchase of, of nutrient credits. And so however that, you know, that might take shape as, as a biofilter, but I, I think there's definitely an opportunity here for us to incorporate those type of stormwater measures, and also understanding the sensitivity of the site and its proximity to the river.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
Is it timing as far as why we have a revised proposal here that was not part of the staff report? Okay, so this is late breaking news?
We, we wanted to do some additional investigation, and this was, honestly, I, we, we should have sent the revised proposal to staff of what, what we were considering. I think we kind of felt pretty strongly about the fact that all of these slopes have evidence of prior disturbance, and if you go out to the site, you'll see all the fill material in 14E. I think we felt pretty strongly about that for quite some time, until kind of actually pinpointing the exact location of that stream down and reviewing the minutes from the 2016 ZMA and doing a lot more study. And so, you know, obviously, this is something that we would have liked to worked out in, in, in advance, and I apologize that, that we didn't get that done with staff beforehand, that's our fault.
And a sort of somewhat different question, the, since it was mentioned, thank you for that. You mentioned that the, the dealerships now, as far as they are square footage wise for parking for vehicles, is they're out of compliance with the sort of national manufacturer standards, would just this slopes on the eastern side of the parcel be sufficient for that need or?
Yeah, we'd, we'd get pretty close, we could pick up approximately about 100 spaces. So that, that would significantly increase their onsite count. And I will note, I think it might have been noted in the staff report, but in the past there has, this is a site plan that was submitted for the rear of the property back in the early 2000s, it was ultimately just withdrawn due to inactivity of, of the plan, and so it expired just because it wasn't resubmitted. But yes, to answer your question, we'd get much, much closer to being in compliance, and it also creates the opportunity for creating additional service space if, if needed, which is also one of those factors for coming into compliance.
So you made the comment that, that Flow Toyota was non-compliant. Are you talking about them being told by corporate that they have to have so much area for display and storage of vehicles?
Yeah, yes, it all, it all comes from the manufacturer.
And they have no recourse to explain to corporate that this is not Nebraska?
That is not.
So that if they would like to have a market in the Piedmont of Virginia, that perhaps they need to be a little more flexible?
They're from from my understanding, the corporate pushes for for the absolute, you know, hardest effort possible to to come into compliance.
Right. Well, I hope they appreciate the this market is quite excellent for these car manufacturers in terms of income and ability to afford these vehicles, which are quite expensive. And, you know, trying to sort of force the landscape to meet an ideal might not be possible in this situation. And I know that you you know that, but just to be able to relay back to the folks higher up who are pushing the local dealerships to try to meet what may be an unrealistic standard in a hilly environment. I just want to emphasize that for the record.
Yeah, I mean, that's a totally, totally fair point. I think in this case, it's an interesting landscape back there that, you know, we could basically kind of fill in this area to kind of tie into into this grade. And there's also a severely eroded ditch, which I think some improvements would would help. And, you know, obviously, it would go to impervious surface, but there would be a brand, it would, those would all be subject to modern stormwater regulations, whereas everything in this area.
Right. Yeah, part of the, yeah, I mean, you showed us part of a spring, and then there was sort of a crudely constructed ditch there. I bought my first Toyota engine, my very first engine ever, from a place just out in Maryland. And that that particular manufacturer had a multi-story garage, and the cars went up and down in an elevator. So because our land is cheaper here, we don't put a premium on it. But there are other ways to store cars than just continually making endlessly flat, spread out parking lots. So, you know, as we, as we start to value the the urban ring and try not to expand the growth area, you know, perhaps that is another option to be explored. I realize that's expensive. But, you know, it, you know, we don't, we only have so much land, right? We're not making more. So I'll leave it, I'll leave it at that. But I just wanted to say, we don't have to just have surface parking lots to store cars that mostly just sit there. That's all I have. I I'm waiting to hear public comments and more discussion before I say anything else.
Any other questions for the applicant? Yes, sir.
So I have a couple of questions. So fine. Good to see you this evening.
You too, as well.
If I, if I, if I understood an email that I received from the ARB folks, is something else happening on this property with a redesign of the Mercedes dealership?
There has that been submitted? Okay, sorry. Yeah.
Justin Champ, engineer for all the flow projects. I'll just, this is not related, it does not relate to this property. But just so you know, to answer the question, the current temporary Hyundai site, which was Porsche Voltan, moved across the street, is becoming Mercedes Benz. So that is being renovated, you know, it's an ARB application to change the building around, but does not affect these.
So it's not this, it's not this property. So what's this property going to become?
I don't know what the Mercedes, they have other brands. They're talking to the current Mercedes store is way too small for a modern Mercedes Benz dealer. So they're moving down the street. And I think I'm sure they'll be repurposing the current. So Mercedes you see here is not the Mercedes of the.
It's not the Mercedes that will be there and some X point in time. Okay, thank you. And so if I understand correctly, the sort of green cane piece that you've redesignated, or that you're trying to ask us to redesignate, that's really what we're talking about right now. All the rest of the the green that's for the west on that piece of property, we are not discussing that any longer.
Yeah, I mean, I think after we located that stream, and then after seeing, you know, the staff report and talking to staff about their evaluation of it, that's we'd we'd like to remove that from.
So we're uniquely talking about that. And if I understand from, given that it's a bit different, on your, on your page, on your page 11, what we would expect to see there is a, is a, is a moving, a gaining of additional parkings outside display, basically outside display?
Yes, or additional service space.
Or service spaces. Okay. And service and service spaces are not considered outside display?
No, but and it's not a, it's not a body shop. I think that's typically the designation that we get caught up in on these is that body shop especially.
So that's not what we're, we really are talking about, just doing garage, sort of, sort of repairs, typical repairs?
Yes.
Okay, servicing, okay. Will there still be that that asphalt that goes between the the current day Mercedes, the back of the the back of the Toyota? And if you're wise, you can go to the BMW place too. You can, you can come across all of theirs from that black, that black. So you'll still maintain?
There'll still be a, yes, there'll still be a connection between the two parcels.
Now, this is where I'm going to ask, you may know, but I think Steph's going to come out because I need, I want to hear all of this at the same time. VDOT is doing something on that road.
Yep.
On 250?
250.
Are you aware whether or not they're putting, they're getting rid of the turn lane in front of all this?
Michael Barnes, I haven't, I haven't looked at, if this was my overlook hotel presentation, I would have it in this in these slides, but you might have some more info.
Sure. The answer is yes. The VDOT has a project that is taking out pretty much the entire, all the turn lanes with the exception of a turn in at Town and Country, I think it is. And then one down at the People's Place. But basically, the turn lane where cars are currently unloaded sometimes is being removed in the next maybe two years or so.
Right, exactly.
So that is another push for these, not that anyone should be unloading cars in 250, but there are problems at these sites. And I just, I was, that's not the question you asked, but I just have to mention it. It's not, there's a, it's not just sort of story more cars and things, but it's like the, they have to tell customers it's going to be X number of days or weeks we get to you, because they just don't have room for their vehicles inside. So it is really a service related issue.
So is the service related? And would you expect when they're delivering cars that they'll not, since they won't be able to do it in the middle of 250, they'll have to go on the property someplace and use one and use the internal road?
They would have to, yes. And we were working with flow. We just did a connection to actually connect BMW to what is now Hyundai. It's actually a little grass strip there.
Right.
They're going to build a connection there so they can get cars from People Place, so they can unload safely through the sites on 250. So there's ongoing work now that flow has acquired most all of the.
Basically, everything up there.
That side of the street to improve that. But it is, you know, there are tight on space. And so these are all valuable inches of asphalt, even though there are many there, we recognize every inch is valuable.
You know, I just wanted to be clear because I knew, I'd just seen something that they were doing cross rocks across from, I call it the giant shopping center. I'm sure it's got some, some highfalutin name, but it's a giant shopping center for me that you can get across 250 there. And I think I remembered somebody, I don't know if it was Kevin or someone, saying that at that point, they were talking about eliminating the turn lanes, the left and right turn lanes, and putting some sort of concrete median down, the concrete thing down there, which would then make it even more difficult. Well, I should say it would make it more difficult, it would make it more helpful to have an alternative means to travel off 250 between these properties, since they're still owned by the same person. Okay. So having been to the property, I'm pushing on the outdoors display, there are new vehicles in the back of both of those properties. There are more, there are more new vehicles in the back of the 7814 property. That's both Toyota and Mercedes than there are in the 14A property. So I don't understand why, I don't understand why there would be a need to come back to the planning commission for outdoor display when there's already brand new cars sitting out there with people like me looking at them.
So all of that, I believe all of that outdoor storage and display predates the entrance corridor regulations and the special use permit required for outdoor storage and display in EC. So since this would be expanding that use, new use established on this property, is we would be applying for a special use permit.
Sure. Any other questions for the applicant? I just said one, if you could expand just a little bit on the plans for future stormwater management.
Yeah.
I know Commissioner Murray asked that question. Are you planning underground storage? Are you, I mean, is it too early to tell?
Certainly, yeah. And Justin, feel free to apply as well. But I mean, this is something we've talked about a lot, and especially after locating that stream location. And that's why I really wanted to mention the onsite treatment instead of purchasing of credits. And so with that, we will have some type of surface treatment facility probably incorporated also concurrently with an underground detention system as well.
Got it.
If I could just add up to that, you know, we, we have, you know, looked at this and are content, even though it's not slightly required to have some sort of proffer, we can add to that effect, because this is, you know, I would say, you know, all water on Pan Top trains right to the Rivanna, right? There's a last project here, it was a question about doing a extended detention basin, which is like a permanent wetland. And that site didn't have enough water to stay in one. This is a big gully that comes through that's washed out across the site adjacent to the, behind the 14A parcel. So our intention would be to fill that gully in, to pipe it and discharge that into some kind of basin.
Yeah.
Which would then capture, it's about eight or 10 acres of water of all parking lot that drains upstream down across that. That's why it's so eroded.
Yeah.
If somebody installed the pipe there 30 years ago, and there's no channel of any sort. So I think our feeling when relooking at it again, and keep in mind that we didn't look at this maybe as closely because the staff report previously or staff comments previously were, hey, we're okay with these ones that were most important to us.
Yeah.
And so when I looked at that again, we really feel like, you know, those that that whole area is a mess and is contributing to constant sedimentation right now because of the road ditch. And if we fill that in and put a basin, at the end of it, it'll actually fix a problem that exists currently.
Got it. Thank you. Great. Thanks very much. Great presentation. And we'll now open it up to the public for comment. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to this matter? No? Okay. Seeing none? Anybody online? Wow, that was quick. Would you?
Don't jinx the chair.
Okay. Would you like to have any more time to talk to us? Applicant?
You have to rebut the airspace.
All right. With that, I will close the public hearing and open it up for discussion.
I have a question if I can. This is an upstream, this is an upstream, you know, so you know, everybody hears me when I say, why are we having to put a sidewalk in a place that, as my colleague said, it's going to go like this? So why do we do this? So I'm, I am pleased that they're talking about putting something more than what they need to do. But realistically, if you look upstream, this is not their prop, this is not, they are not the cause of this problem.
That's the whole eight acres of asphalt.
It's all, it's the giant parking lot.
You mean like the eroding gully when you say this?
Yeah, it's not. And it's, it's the car dealership next to them that goes all the way back. And so this is a question, at what point, we were talking about there was going to be a hotel on the other side of the upper car lot there, remember?
Yeah.
Is that, this is that, is that going to be built?
I remember that on the.
Are you talking one, two parcels to the, to the east of 7814A?
On the other side of the other car lot?
Yeah. Mr. Spooner's lot.
So I mean, there is a site plan that's been submitted. We don't have any building permits in, but that that parcel could, I mean, it has highway commercial zoning, any of these parcels can develop. But the hotel, we have seen it move forward through the process.
So my, thank you. So my piece is that, you know, we talk about having, having unified or having shared facilities. It would, I would just hope that as this, whatever this hotel or whatever is being built up there, that it would help to contribute to the cleaning of the water here and not just have it be the responsibility of one place that's not causing all of the, that's not, that's not causing all of the detriments that.
Just be clear, I think some of those other adjacent properties did have stormwater.
They did?
On them, yes. I mean, they date 2002. I heard the applicant say something about modern stormwater. I know a lot of those ones have developed since 2000 at least.
They were, they were, they've been upgraded since then. I will share for my, for our colleagues, if you may recall, we almost did not, we almost did not have the Porsche dealership again. Because Porsche was annoyed that they couldn't get the facade that they wanted. Now, forget, let's disregard the fact that it's Porsche, because it could have been the Subaru dealer up 29 that the same conversation went to. All I'm just going to say is that, is that car dealers are manufacturers are becoming much more concerned about their brand and what their brand looks like from the road. And they are telling owners or lessees, if you don't do it, I'll go get Karen, because Karen will do it for me down there on the, on the James. And so there is some, it is not, it can be an uncomfortable conversation, as I do know that it was when they were trying to, when they were trying to move across the street from the BMW, actually, it was BMW that kicked Porsche out, is really how it went down. And so I'm sure, I'm sure our, our applicant is fighting hard to do the right thing on that piece of property.
The other conversation?
I have some thoughts, but I don't want to.
Well, I mean, I guess I have some process questions. So the discussion was made about a proffer that could be made for stormwater on the site to address at least the quantity of stormwater. Oh, sorry. Yeah, the discussion was made about being able to make a proffer that would address the quantity, if not maybe some of the quality of the stormwater that's, that's coming to this area. What is for for staff or the county attorney, what is the process for this kind of?
So I'm glad you asked. So the proposal, just to be clear, the proposal that's before the commission tonight is the one that was submitted to staff that staff has analyzed. So when the commission makes its recommendation later in the evening, it needs to be for the proposal that was actually submitted and that's been reviewed by staff. So I mean, if the board wants to, or excuse me, if the commission wants to make a separate recommendation in addition to that, it's certainly free to do so, but it's required to make a recommendation on the plan as submitted. If the applicant wishes the staff and the commission to consider something else, it needs to go through the process of submitting that and having that reviewed and formally submitted to the commission.
And, and sorry, one more question. So are we allowed to put conditions on this kind of application?
The commission can make suggested conditions part of its recommendation, yes.
Yes, it's, it's board, are we in our deliberation?
Yeah, we're.
Is that, so we're in, okay.
I know after that long public hearing, it's hard to keep track.
Yeah.
So that was my understanding that we're, we're obviously, we're deliberating and talking about what was submitted to us, which is not just your, the cane or whatever you call it.
The cane.
The cane.
The cane.
That's what, you know, what they proposed, but that's not what's in front of us. It's the whole, it's the whole thing. I am concerned of what contaminants are going down there now. I'm not sure what kind of monitoring we have or don't have. I'm looking at staff, but not necessarily asking you a question. So I mean, there's obviously waters flowing through that parking lot, picking up all kinds of affluence and going into the Rivanna. I mean, so any, I think it's an opportunity to make an improvement. And I would encourage the applicant to really think about that as they, because they're going to have to resubmit this anyway. But I think along with, it's got to be more than just move the slopes from preserved to managed, is we're asking to do that because we're making an improvement to this property to mitigate contaminants.
Bigger issue.
And I think, I think that would, that would create a benefit to the community and to the environment. Though to me, there's a trade off there. Okay, we're changing what are, what are, you know, maybe there's some disturbance there, but they're, they're preserved slopes to manage. But there is a, there's potentially a bigger positive impact down the road.
Yeah, I mean, I.
If constructed the correct way.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with that. I mean, anytime you have a channelized stream, for example, you're automatically create, if nothing else, you're, you're contributing a huge amount of sediment every time it rains when you have a channelized stream. So that little channelized piece that's right there, that is something that's, that's contributing at least sediment right now.
Yeah.
So I mean, I think now, one concern I have is, you know, I, I remember back when the the whole system of managed and preserved slopes was originally created, and there was this negotiation that happened with environmental community, the same waivers were being offered for just about everything. And so environmentalists said, okay, listen, we can make this, we'll negotiate, we'll make part of this process easier. We're willing to concede. We can make this, we'll negotiate, we'll make part of this process easier. We're willing to concede it, have some of these be managed. But we want some things that are preserved and they're really preserved. And. My concern is that. That the preserved slopes that we have might be dying from a death of a thousand cuts. As development occurs around them, you know, spill spills onto them. Um, whoops. We accidentally disturbed the slope here, or worse, we actually accidentally disturbed the slope here. Oh, we put our drainage pipe right into this area where the preserve slopes and that's channelized. So, so eventually down the road, people say, oh, you know, this thing that's preserved is no longer of quality anymore. So we should disturb that too. And so there's sort of incremental, um, destruction that can happen of these areas that were supposed to be preserved. And I don't know how to address that. It can even be addressed here.
Yeah.
But it is a concern.
Ms., Ms. Chair, if I might just clarify the response I made earlier to, uh, Commissioner Murray's question. That because this is zoning map amendment, conditions can't be imposed on a rezoning. However, the, the commission can say that its recommendation is based on certain factors. So I just wanted to clarify. If, if conditions are recommended, they wouldn't be conditions on, within the rezoning itself. It would be conditions. That, that the planning commission would be making a recommendation based on certain conditions, if that makes sense.
Yeah, it does.
Is, is the commission able to? Modify or put forward a resolution, a motion? That deals with the cane as opposed to dealing with all the other pieces?
Yeah, I'm sorry, that deals with what?
The red, the, um, outlined in red.
A-again, I think the commission needs to make a recommendation on the submission as a whole. And then if it wishes to make additional recommendations, it's free to do so.
Okay.
That was kind of where I was. And I was trying to creatively think of a way we could save the applicant time in this whole process. By describing the alternative that was presented to us tonight in a way that. Allows us to recommend approval. Or denial with a consideration for approval if these other conditions were met. So it sounds like we could, yeah.
I, I mean, again, the single most important thing before the commission is to, is to give a recommendation, uh, up or down. On the application to submit it and then beyond that, it's up to the commission if it wishes to make additional recommendations.
Before we get into all that too, one thing I did want to, just a, a brief reply to Commissioner Murray is, is sometimes though with the preserve slopes, we've got. And let's kind of be real about this. This is a highway with, you know, cars that have been sold in lots for sixty years. Um, and, and the, the slopes were kind of put there by people making the car lots. And I don't. Uh, I guess I've yet to fully grok the reason for kind of like a, a sort of sacrosanct preservation of some of those slopes when it's just, they, they were put there. In the seventies.
So. That whole area to give you sort of a bigger ecological context i- is actually a surprise.
Mr. Murray, can you speak into the mic? I can't hear you down here.
Sorry, that, that area, um, of the Rivanna River is, is actually a quite, um, exemplary biodiversity area. There's a lot of rare species that occur. I mean, actually, there's occurrence of, of one species that's not only known from other, one other spot in the county. So despite them being, this being an area that is subject to dis- disturbance. The area along the Rivanna River is actually a very important area, particularly things like bluffs. And so you may have a little patch of forest, but you, you can't have things that survive in those areas and certainly downstream from those areas. They become important. And so. As I said, my concern is the sort of incremental creep, you know, into the critical slopes, into the streams, um, until eventually we're. We're up against the river itself and there's sort of a.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I, I, I'm just, since we're discussing, I, I get the death by a thousand cuts comment. I, for me. I mean, each case, right, stands on its own. And in this case, the evidence that I'm seeing that shows the disturbance that's already taken place. Would, um. Would justify further disturbance to bene- to benefit the greater whole. Oh, I'm not seeing that in a lot of other places where that would be a, maybe a different read, but for me, it's, it's that.
Yeah, a- and I agree because part of the proposal is to leave it in a better condition than it is now.
Yeah.
I mean, of course. The, well. Of course, that's not part of this proposal. So when we.
I think we get back to this.
I think this proposal, I mean, I would have to say it, I'd have to vote no on this proposal. What's in front of me? But if I had seen it, but if I had a different proposal in front of me that included the things that we had discussed, I would vote yes.
I would be the same.
I agree.
I think our applicants would be the same.
Well, I mean, it, there's two oper- there's two options, right? And we can request denial. Add comments or.
Very, they would ask a request.
Or a request deferral.
No, we can't.
Uh, uh, yeah, I would suggest that if, if a deferral is, is considered, it should be at the request of the applicant rather than at the initiation of the commission.
A hundred percent. I didn't mean to say otherwise. Okay, well, whose district is this in?
Not mine.
Would anybody like to step in for Cory? Make a motion?
I wonder if Ms. Raxdale might put the, uh, motion slides up on the screen, please?
Here, I move to recommend denial of ZMA two zero two four zero 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 four. For the reasons stated in the staff report.
Second.
Any further discussion? The only further discussion I think I would add is that there, just to highlight that there wasn't a, there was further discussion provided, further. Detail provided by the applicant tonight that was.
Mr. Chair, I appreciate the additional discussion and that, and the, the commission certainly welcome to make additional discussion, but there, there is a motion and a second. And at this point. That the, the motion should be voted on or formally modified.
Not added in discussion.
Correct. I mean, and if, and if the commission chooses to make a, a second motion after this motion, it's certainly free to do so.
Okay, got it. All right. So we have a motion, a second, no discussion. Do we have a vote?
Mr. Chair, if, if there's further discussion on just that simple motion, that's fine. I just wanted to clarify what the motion was that the commission is voting on.
Got it. Yes, please call the roll.
Mr. Missile.
Hi.
Mr. Harizano.
Hi.
Ms. Firehawk.
Hi.
Mr. Murray.
Hi.
Mr. Bivens.
Hi.
And Mr. Moore.
Hi.
Thank you. Can we now make a?
If the commission wishes to make further motions, it's certainly welcome to do so.
You want me to give a shot?
Yes, please.
Uh, I. Move to recommend. An amended version of ZMA twenty twenty-four zero zero zero, zero four. If it, you know, I guess was a contingent on, uh, removal of the western contiguous portion of preserve slopes. And with the addition of.
Clarification.
Water management.
Clarification around.
Clarification around, you know, um, yeah, water management. Stormwater management, yeah.
That will ultimately improve.
Yeah, that will ultimately.
The downstream condition.
Yes, those words, add that to my motion.
Commissioner Moore, is that in reference to what's on appearing on the screen right now? Is ZMA request revised proposal?
Yeah, so basically, uh, uh, I would move to, uh, recommend the revised proposal with the addition of. Uh, stormwater management that would improve the overall.
But I don't think that was not advertised to the public is what we were voting on tonight.
No, I know, I know. It's, this is just a, a motion that we can say this is what we would like to see.
So is, is the motion that the, that the commission stated support for a revised proposal that would?
To be brought forward.
Yeah.
A future date to be determined.
Totally fine, yeah. However, the, the, the Robert's rules portion of this is not my strong suit.
Did we get all the language in there? I, I might just add the words quantity and quality in regards to the stormwater. Commissioner Moore, I don't want to.
No.
Rain on your parade, but just, just to clarify your alternative recommendation.
Uh, alternative recommendation would be that the planning commission, uh, registers its support.
Yeah.
Expresses its support for the revised proposal presented in, uh, in person. With an addition of, uh, stormwater management that improves the quantity and quality of overall.
The remove, removal of TM tax mop parcel seventy-eight fourteen E from consideration. Of changing from managers to, of keeping those preserved. So we're keeping those preserved. Remainder, we are considering.
Portions stay preserved, yeah.
Okay, I, I think we're okay. Okay, great. Thank you. Uh, so that's a motion. So we have a second? We have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
I, I, I don't have comfort with this level of motion considering that we don't actually have a proposal from the applicant.
Sure.
And so I also don't want to recommend something that might bind us in the future.
I've never, yeah, I've never heard.
And so, and we've not done this type of action before. I think that. The applicant has heard us speak in our deliberations before we made the last vote and they're well aware of what we thought. So I don't believe it needs to be in the form of a motion.
Okay.
I am sore.
I tend to agree just because I've never heard this type of motion used. I think it's a strong recommendation. And it's a vote of support.
Sure.
Okay.
Agreed.
So is, is Commissioner Moore withdrawing his motion or?
Uh, I mean, we can. Sure, yeah, withdraw the motion. I think we have made all the points we need to make early.
Think we got it covered. All right, great. Thank you. Uh, I think we're done with that one, right? Did we, we did vote?
Yes.
Okay, great. All right, we thank you all. We will move on to, um, let's see, where were we? ZTA twenty twenty-four dash two data centers. Changing of the guard. Thank you, sir.
Excuse me, just give me a, a second here.
Like we've been here forever and ever and it's only seven thirty. Yeah, I know, it just feels like, yeah, it feels like it's gonna be the end of the meeting now.
All right, sir, floor is yours. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Bill Fritz with the Community Development Department. Uh, this is a, a zoning text amendment for. Uh, data centers. It is a phase one. So, uh, data centers have the potential for impacts that are different than other land uses. They can generate sounds at a frequency. Different than other land uses and potentially have excessive water consumption. Because the use does not have a large number of people working in the buildings, the need for windows is reduced. While the need for cooling facilities is increased, resulting in a building appearance different from other uses. Because of the need for energy, there may be offsite impacts to the power grid. So for those reasons, we have proposed regulations. What we're proposing is a, uh, a follow-on approach. The first step is limited in scope. In order to allow some regulation to be put in place quickly. These regulations will allow the county to review applications and mitigate the impacts of any project. The follow-on step is more comprehensive and will involve researching the potential impacts and methods of im- impact mitigation. So what's the current situation? Currently, there are no specific performance regulations for data centers. The only time that the county can evaluate a request and potentially establish conditions is in commercial centers, uh, commercial districts, some commercial districts. When the data center is over four thousand square feet. So what's proposed? The proposed ordinance continues to allow accessory data centers and data centers under four thousand, uh, excuse me. Forty thousand square feet in the industrial districts. Allowing accessory use is necessary because many businesses and organizations operate computer systems that would qualify as data centers. For example, the services operated by the county have the characteristics of a data center. But without the impacts generated by a large data center. So. This building isn't a data center. Due to the nature of data centers, it's staff opinion that accessory data centers will not generate impacts greater than generated by the primary use. However, during the phase two zoning text amendment, this issue can be further evaluated as can by, as can the by right size. Larger facilities will be by special use permits under the proposed ordinance, allowing detailed analysis of the specific application. It should be noted that there are no pending or proposed data centers that would be subject to a special use permit or other county regulations. Limited performance standards are proposed for this text amendment. The phase two evaluation may indicate a need to modify these regulations. And may include additional regulations. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Can I just ask, could you go back to slide? I think it was slide four.
Uh, slide four?
I, I think it was slide four.
Current situation?
Yeah.
Got it.
The last two bullets, by special exception. Okay, thank you. I just had to cut this to.
I will say a lot of the, a lot of the information you see on the screen, which, why I didn't read it is actually cut and paste from the staff report. So.
Could I ask a silly question?
Yeah, those are first.
Okay, so I'm trying to, in my brain, maybe I'm just tired, I was trying to get picture of forty thousand square feet. So like, how many Costcos is that?
Oh, uh.
Did you pull the Costco?
Yeah.
I, I believe the Costco, I think Costco is bigger.
It's a, it's a little bit less.
Amelia McKelly, uh, project manager, it's the size of the grand home furnishing store on twenty-nine north. Just north of where Crutchfield is.
Yeah.
Costco, I, I can't remember exactly. I looked it up, but it's well over a hundred thousand, like a hundred.
So it's like a twenty or thirty. Yep, that helps me. Thank you.
We'll use anything but the metric system.
I never go to Grand Furnishings. I can only go to Costco, sorry.
Chris, thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. Um. So. The, the forty thousand. Is there anything in, in the? In the regulations that would prohibit multiple forty thousand developments to be?
We believe that the existing language, it's in the ordinance because it talks about aggr- uh, aggregate area. We believe that that. Does limit it. Um, that question has been raised and we're going to look into that further. The intent is clearly to do that. We believe the existing language is, we're going to follow up with the zoning administrator to make sure that that is in fact, ask that very pointed question. Uh, get a determination. Yes, that's how it would be interpreted. If there's any concern that maybe it wouldn't be, we can. Uh, tighten that language up or modify it in some way, but the intent is that it's forty thousand per parcel.
And is the forty thousand limited to the, to the built area? Or is, but does it also include the equipment yards that are associated with data centers?
Um, it defines it as the, I believe it defines it as. It's the gross square footage of the, of the data center. So, uh, things that were, yeah. Things that were outside would not be incorporated as the gross floor area.
That's not part of, that's not part of the forty thousand.
Correct.
It's a data center.
I wanted to make sure. We've gone through, we've gone through various drafts. So I want to make sure I have the, the language that actually is before you.
My colleague was asking me to ask you, is there a height limitation?
Uh, it'd be the standard height limitation of the district in which it's located. So no special regulations based on that. That could be something that's evaluated in a, in a phase two.
So if three-story buildings were allowed, it could be a three-story building, but in, but it would be a three-story windowless building.
It could be.
So it would be much more obnoxious looking aesthetically potentially than a building that say was. A hotel or some other thing that blended in perhaps more with the other architecture.
Whether or not somebody would build a three-story forty thousand square, forty thousand square foot building, that's, that's a question. But yes, the answer is yes, they could. And these are exactly the, what you're bringing up are exactly the kinds of things that we want to do with the more comprehensive, uh, phase two.
Right, well, we just talked about our scarcity of flat land. And we also talked about that when we evaluated. How much commercial area we had available several years ago. And we went through that exhaustive spreadsheet that Elaine made and all that. If you remember.
So they could very easily be thirty feet tall.
Yes.
You know, depending on how they stack the mechanical systems and so forth, so.
I had some questions. Uh, if you don't want to interrupt.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, I I was actually really appreciated the locality comparison, uh, data sheet, the five pages of kind of what some of our neighbors and.
Yeah.
You have Amelia McCully to thank for that.
Yeah, it's really clear and and thank you. Um, I I could see some echoes of Fairfax in in what's proposed here. And also noticed that they seem to have this extensive review process and and consultant study and all the rest. And so I was wondering about some of the points of difference between what we've got here in front of us and what Fairfax has decided to do. Um, and just if you could explain kind of your assessment and why, um, specifically Fairfax is going to allow by right up to eighty thousand square feet in the industrial zones, by right up to forty thousand square feet in their denser commercial zones. We've got a max of forty thousand in our industrial zones and only special use permits in our commercial zones. And I just wanted to find out more about why that that difference.
Just so you know, uh, I'll let Amelia talk a little bit more about the the details of all those districts. But we actually had some internal discussions about whether to include or not include those the spreadsheets, if you will. Because that's sort of giving you an insight to the kinds of things that will be coming as that phase two, as we are, we're learning those things. So we're sort of giving you insight into, these are the other things we're working on. So we thought about including, we thought about excluding it. Ultimately, we we decided to include it. So I just want you to understand why it's there. Um, given that, if, uh, I don't know if there's anything Amelia would like to add about the question you asked.
Fairfax used a tiered system, as you noted, forty thousand and eighty thousand. And of course, the scale and character of development in Fairfax as compared to Almirall is just worlds apart. So we thought it was appropriate to have a tiered system. We also thought that the increased setback was appropriate. They also have some additional, uh, regulations about, um, equipment screening and distance to a metro and things like that. And things that really need more time to consider. Of course, we don't have metro, but additional, more expanded performance and community standards that would be a phase two consideration.
Thanks for that. I think the scale is the key reason that makes a lot of sense.
Any other questions? Sure. No? Uh, well, no, just.
I have a quick one.
Yes.
Um, I normally I would think, I thought that in my memory that the resolution of tent we get here at the planning commission and that we vote on that. But this resolution of tents started with the board supervisors. I don't, I don't remember us getting it, but.
No, most, they they start at the board. They go, they go to the board. We haven't done resolution of intent to the, with planning commission in many years.
I know, I've seen them.
Mm-hmm. It's, it's been a while, but we used to, we used to bring them to either the planning commissioner or the board, and now they all go to the board.
So is it that, is it the county's concern that data centers are cut? I mean, I know about other communities. Stru- some of our struggling with data centers because of the extreme power demand that they have and the fact that our state requires that the power demand be met. And then we have the whole solar conversation about solar panels and how much solar we should supply to these data centers. Um, I was really surprised that that's, I think you said Loudoun County had the most data centers of any place in the world. That was in the chart. That was shocking to me. Um, so, so is it the board's feeling since they got the resolution and they obviously wrestled with this that we are about to be hit by data centers? You, I mean, you said there's no but current applications, but it's that we don't have anything right now. So we need to quickly prepare something and then spend more time doing a more detailed regulation for larger facilities. Is that kind of? The process.
I believe it's, it, and again, others who may may want to add, but I believe it is more of a preemptive. There's a potential of it coming. Let's get ahead of the curve. Let's, let's do it. So we're not playing catch up.
Okay, thank you.
So get something in place that will allow us to review them on a case-by-case basis and then more calmly deal with the more comprehensive review.
Okay, I know, I noticed that one of the citizen comments we received was a concern about the, the clause that data centers not be more than twenty-five percent of the primary use. Um, and then their concern was that what if the primary use is really big? So that should we also put a cap on the data center? Like no more than twenty-five percent and no greater than, or is that already covered by the forty thousand square foot limit?
So it would still be, it'd be an accessory use. You certainly could put a, not more than twenty-five percent and no greater than X. We didn't choose to do that because one, it was our opinion they wouldn't get that large. And two, if the data center is accessory to the primary use, they're going to be mitigating the impacts of that data center so that they can operate their primary use and not have those impacts. So we we didn't, we didn't recommend a cap and that's sort of the logic behind it. But we can also understand the logic behind the cap. We, we just, we didn't pick one. That's, that we had to pick one or the other and that's the way we went.
Okay, thanks, Bill.
And if, if I could just add to your, uh, to answer your question of why now. This is such a rapidly changing topic. Even in the ten days since we wrote the staff report, there's one more local locality. So now we're up to six that are in the process of amending their regulations. So it's, it, you just, it's, it's rapidly changing.
And, and we were developing this language while the general assembly was in session. So we weren't quite sure what was going on. So we wanted to make sure we didn't get, you know, out ahead of the general assembly. So we wanted to bring a confined first round zoning text amendment to you that wouldn't have any conflicts with anything the general assembly might do.
I see.
And so now, general assembly is done, we can start, or almost done. And we can do that phase two in a more calm and 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 comprehensive manner.
Thank you.
I just have a couple of detailed questions. One is, I hope I didn't miss this. What's the timing for phase two?
Uh, we're working on it. We don't have a, we don't have a set schedule for it. It, it is, a- as has been pointed out, it's an evolving.
Yeah.
Um, uh, area of of land use.
Right.
Uh, particularly in Virginia, but but also around the country, but particularly in Virginia. So, um, we don't have a specific timeline to give you.
So are we thinking a year, two years, three years, five years? We don't know.
Uh, I'll, I'll put Amelia on the spot. You know, she'll come in a week or two. No. I, I, I don't, I don't have any.
Okay. That's, I was just wondering how long this needs to be in place or how long the vision is for this to last.
And we think that because, or we believe that because it's by special use permit, if we get anything in, we can use what we know at the point that the application comes in and apply that and we'll do the best we can. Uh, so, so, yes.
And then just one question on the sound. I was like, gonna ask about the setbacks, but setbacks, height, all that stuff comes later for the most part, right? I mean, this, this, that's the basics.
The, 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 they will have to comply with the same sound and setbacks that every other prop- use does in the industrial or districts. And if it's by special use permit, you can do other things, but, uh, and it has its own set of setbacks that are different. But
Okay.
Other than that, it would use the standard, um, zoning ordinance regulations for any other industrial use.
Makes sense. The one thing, maybe that's, maybe you just answered the question, but it says generators must be housed in an enclosure that limits the sound as specified. What is as specified?
Uh.
There's another one that talks about. On page one, page one.
Seventy dB.
Yeah, it's, it's.
Page three expands a little bit, says generators must be housed in a level three enclosure or other type of enclosure that limits the sound as specified.
I'm not sure exactly what you're reading from. We have generators, we have generators in section five point one, six, five, D.
I'm looking at the staff report.
D two.
Oh, in D two. Oh, you're looking at the staff report?
Yes, sir.
Oh, did I have a typo in my staff report?
Well, I, I think rather than giving the specification of the regulation, we said as specified by the regulation, just as a shortcut.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, sorry about that.
No, that's okay. I just was wondering what.
It, it's as specified in the, in the reg- in the ordinance regulations. I'm sorry.
That makes sense. Thank you.
And, and the, um, the desire to address noise is really twofold. One is from the generators.
Yeah.
Because it can be locomotive size and there could be multiple ones. So we wanted to make sure that the exercising of the generators is limited to daytime weekday hours. And, um, the thing that is most difficult to regulate from what we've read and can also have quite an impact on people is the ongoing low frequency hum. And that is so hard to regulate and force. And so what many localities have done is increase the setback to attenuate the sound by the time it reaches a property line.
Got it. Great, very helpful. Thanks. Any other questions for the applicant? Yes, sir.
I do. So, so you, you say that you, it's when it's exercised, so once, uh, on the generation, generator exercise, when it's being exercised. What happens in an emergency?
They're exempt.
Yeah.
Okay. I guess, and.
But the, but the advantage is, is that by virtue of having the supplemental regulations the way it is, it's not like they're going to put the generator in an enclosure to exercise and then take it out during.
I understood that. And, and, and by, when I was looking for the enclosure, I didn't, I did, could not see if whether or not it was fully enclosed.
So what we did, so what we did is we referenced the level three enclosure, which is an industry term. And it, it does, it, it's a, it's a, it's a case.
Encapsulated.
It's encapsulated. Or they can come up with a, with an alternative that provides equal level of of sound attenuation.
And that will meet the manufacturer's specifications.
Okay.
Because some of them, because they, they let off carbon monoxide and so forth.
They can't be enclosed. That's, yeah, the ones that I was thinking about couldn't, shouldn't be enclosed because of that.
That's right.
Okay.
That's a real quick following question. You said something about the, the sound during the daytime hours. Wouldn't these be just running twenty-four seven? Aren't they just running all the time?
No.
During an emergency.
That's an emergency. Their generators.
Okay. Oh, I see. So it's emergency generator talking about.
Right.
Right. Okay, in case of power failure.
Yes, yeah, redundancy for continuous.
The chiller was running all the time.
And, and, and to be, and to be clear, uh, Commissioner Farah, I think we're talking about when they want, they, um, here, I have to run the machine. You know, that the oil, so, that's what we're talking about. It's where they're, when they're doing their maintenance or doing the testing.
Okay, okay.
It's one question, still related to sorry setbacks. I'm stuck on that. So when you went like this with your hand, Amelia, you know, that, that with the sound, that made me think residential areas. So we've, it looks like. What is it?
I don't think we're, I think we've excluded them from residential areas.
Is that right? Okay. So if they're adjacent to residential area?
So the way the ordinance is currently drafted, there is a two hundred foot setback from all property lines, including adjacent industrial property lines, because we didn't want this use to negatively impact an adjacent industrial use. Then in the case of adjacent rural area zoning, it's an increase to five hundred.
What about residential?
That would be.
Adjacent to industrial.
Residentially zoned would be two hundred.
So.
If it's a residence on rural area zoning, it would be five hundred.
Yeah, I got you. I'm thinking about, about where there are industrial areas that are adjacent to residential areas. Is there consideration or should we consider it a larger, maybe it's another hundred feet where it's adjacent to residential areas? Another hundred on top, so three hundred.
Foot, um, setback is, and I, I can't tell you exact numbers, but in surveying the other localities is a very common setback number. Um, I, I appreciate that you would perhaps want to go even further from residential.
I'm just curious. I mean, something to think about as we think about if there's a differentiator or how much of the industrial land actually does it is adjacent to rural. I mean, uh, residential. We've got something.
I, uh, did want to point out that I can say with confidence that we've all driven past a data center that was only a hundred and fourteen feet from a road. UV's data center is really quite close to Ivy Road.
That was tiny.
Well, the, well, the, the. I, I did have a conversation about the data center that's going on at Fontaine. And it's about the same size as the, as the, um, if any, anyone's been up to Fontaine, if you need to see in the back and sort of the, the back left-hand corner, they're putting up a, um, a, a power plant. And so if you want to, if you were in that area, that's about forty thousand square feet. So I had a, and they're going to put an accessory data center next to the, next to the power plant. So it's all good, except for that very expensive property that I wanted the, I wanted the, the yurt on, uh, right there.
All right. Any other questions for the applicant?
I have a question. Yes, sir. Do you have?
Oh, I was. Yeah, I mean, I was just going to point out, um, well, one of the questions I was going to ask is, sir, if, and when we did a val- if we did an evaluation, how many of these industrial properties do we have? That would be able to meet these conditions?
We're working on, uh, we're, we're working with our GIS people to try to have that mapping so that we can analyze it. They've given us some information and we're trying to work our way through it to make sure we understand. We, we, we know that with these setbacks, the two hundred, five hundred, that there is land that would be available to have a special use permit or e- or even a by right, you know, thirty-nine, nine. Or let's just call it forty. It's easier to say, uh, 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 data center. And so we know there's some land available, but we will continue to look as part of the phase two. Are these setbacks the right setbacks, the wrong setbacks? We should, what should we be looking at? Uh, in addition, we'll start really getting into that parcel by parcel specific analysis.
Now, to, to state the obvious, this would, because of the requirement for a, a buffer from the rural area, this would preclude any, um, non-conforming industrial area in the, in the rural area.
Two, two, two things. One, uh, we, one of the requirements is that it be on public water and sewer. Uh, and there are very few, very few properties that are in the rural area.
Think of other properties that were industrial that maybe.
Yeah, they're very. Right, there are very few properties in the rural areas of the comprehensive plan that have water and sewer. And the ones that do, I think it's two or three, the, the sizes of them are, are such that they would not be eligible to have, they, they wouldn't meet setbacks.
Nice question. So I do have a kind of have two questions. Okay. My one question, I was thinking about what happened, what would happen if down at Willow Tree, which has gone through its iteration of being purchased by things, and I can imagine if you look at the sort of things that they do down there, they could easily say to serve our clients, we probably should have an accessory data center there. How would that, how would we cite that, given its location?
Well, that's an industrial property that, that's, uh, yes, they rezone that piece to industrial, if my memory serves me. Uh, they rezoned it to industrial and, uh, they would need to meet the setbacks from adjoining, adjoining lot lines or abutting lot lines. Uh, if they were over forty thousand square feet, they were serving somebody else other than the primary user. It'd be by special use permit. And if they were making interior renovations, they'd apply for their building permits and clearances and we would verify it's under twenty-five percent.
So since their business is really serving other people, their business is serving others, that's their core business. So if a data center, if they were to come forward for a request for a data center, it would still need to be special, a special, an S, an SP because it's not serving them, even though their business is serving others.
Right. Yes, that's how we believe it would be interpreted. It'd be, it'd be over forty thousand square feet.
It would be, oh, it would definitely be over forty.
Ass- assuming they use the substantial part of the building. It's, it's a big building.
It is. It's a very big. So you mentioned also that the legislature is now, and it's that funny period where it's sort of waiting. The, the, the things that I read from there is that they didn't come to any conclusion.
Uh, none of its land use.
Yeah, okay. So they threw it back to J-LAR and J-LAR.
Uh, there is, yeah, I take that back. There is one which I I'll, I'll be honest, I don't understand why it even needs to be a, a bill that basically says that during the special use permit process, you can request sound profiles and like.
Right, 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 right. And then I think they also threw it back to J-LAR and J-LAR said, well, you need to go investigate more.
Right.
Okay, so we're basically trying to get out ahead before J-LAR comes back and says, here's what we think.
Uh, this will certainly put us in a good position that if we do get in a position where we do the regulations and as you know, sometimes the general assembly says, if you don't have regulations in effect by this date, here's what you must do.
Right, right.
Uh, we might be in a good position to, to beat that.
Okay.
Question on your second, what do you call your second phase?
Phase two.
Phase two, okay. So I'm sorry, you guys have been looking at how some municipalities are now requiring that data centers or they're putting into their, their regulations, the data centers of a certain size produce their own energy. Part of the reason for that, and you guys may be aware, but I just wanted, is because data centers require non-interrupted service. So if power goes out, hospitals and data centers get power. Everybody else loses power. So, so that's part of, of that. And so even though this is a smaller one or these are smaller, if you, if you start getting forty thousand here, forty thousand there, that's a lot of power that they're going to demand, that's taking that power off the grid, uh, for everybody else in Almirall County. So I think that's something that needs, that we need to grapple with some, some of these, you know, like Loudoun. So I think that's something that needs that we need to grapple with some some of these, you know, like Loudon and others are beginning to grapple with it after they're seeing the impacts. Um, so it's just an important realization that we need to, and it comes back to the the solar, which is it's a drop in the bucket. So and actually, they wouldn't even take solar.
No, they wouldn't.
Because it's not.
Well, I I Amelia's jotted that down, so absolutely we'll have that uh something we consider during the phase two.
Thanks.
Any other comments, questions? All right, if not, I will open the public hearing and the we have some one person on the sign up sheet. It is Morgan Butler. If you'd like to come up and please state your name and general location of residence. And you'll have three minutes. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Missel, members of the Commission and staff. My name is Morgan Butler. I'm a senior attorney for the Southern Environmental Law Center. Thank you for the chance to comment tonight. The proposal before you is an important initial effort to patch what we view as a very concerning hole in the county zoning ordinance. And we thank staff for working on it and for the excellent staff report that they've prepared. As that staff report explains, the county's ordinance is being interpreted to allow data centers as a buy right use in all industrial zoning districts, regardless of the size or any other aspects of the proposal. As a result, the county has no ability to deny a data center proposal in an industrial zoning district or even to place additional safeguards on a proposal beyond the default requirements that apply in that zoning district. To be sure, data centers are an important part of the digital economy and they provide valuable benefits. But the experience of numerous localities in Virginia is that without thoughtful zoning protections in place, data center development can cause significant harm to communities and the environment. We therefore generally support the proposal before you tonight and especially the provisions to require a special use permit for data center proposals above a certain size in the industrial zoning districts. At the same time, we feel some important clarifications are needed to this and other aspects of the proposal to ensure it accomplishes its purpose while phase two of this effort is developed. First, and this was a question raised tonight, we're concerned that the new language proposed to be plugged into the industrial use table in section twenty six point two could be read to allow an unlimited number of data centers on an industrial site by right so long as each data center individually does not exceed forty thousand square feet. We assume that the intent here and staff reiterated this tonight is that all data center uses on a on a site shall not in the aggregate exceed forty thousand square feet. And we recommend clarifying the language to match that intent and avoid creating a loophole. Second, we have some reservations with expanding the allowance for data centers into additional commercial districts, even by special use permit. Data centers seem especially likely to conflict with the purposes and intent of the downtown Rose District. So we recommend reconsidering allowing data centers in that district in particular. And finally, we feel the provisions on accessory data centers should be tightened up in a couple of ways to make sure they have their intended effect. First, we recommend including that overall square footage size limit on all accessory data center uses on a site in addition to that twenty five percent gross floor area cap. It may be the case that an overall square footage size limit may never prove necessary in light of that twenty five percent cap, but we see no harm in including it just to be safe. And number two, the three provisions laying out the conditions that a data center must meet to qualify as an accessory use should not be something that can be waived or modified by a special exception. So we recommend adding those to the section of the draft listing the provisions that are not subject to special exceptions. Thank you very much for your consideration of our comments and recommendations, and thanks again to staff for their work on this.
Thanks very much. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this tonight? Here, seeing no one, anybody online? No, all right. Um, well, bring it back to the applicant. Would you like to make any comments on what was just stated in the public?
Be happy to answer any questions. I I have nothing additional to add.
Okay, I guess technically I'm going to close the public hearing and we will go into discussion.
Well, I have a question for the applicant.
Yes.
You know, that didn't have a counterproposal or anything. So that the last comment that Mr. Butler made about us, I'm not sure if I captured it exactly right. He said, um, also, he so he had two ideas, and the second one was that it we not make it applicable to use as allowed by special exception. So so how would we word that if we wanted to do that?
You would simply amend uh item E, special exceptions, and you would say subsections uh A one and.
What page are you on?
Pay, I'm on these, the ordinance, and it's page two of fourteen.
Sorry.
Item E?
Item E, A one.
Yes, I item E, you would simply add uh A one as one of the sections that may not be modified or waived by special exception.
Modified or waived by?
Yeah, I did. Sorry, I didn't read the full language. So it would it would you would change you would change five one six five E to read special exceptions. Subsection A one and B one may not be modified or waived by special exception.
Okay, thank you.
It'll take me a few minutes.
I mean, a special exception consideration is part of the special use permit application, right?
They could come forward and ask for a special exception, and we don't rule on special exceptions. It usually goes to the board. Right? So we don't even discuss that. So we're saying that they can't, yeah, we're saying they can't come in by special exception and ask for that by special exception.
Got it. But it could still be asked for under a special use permit process.
Yeah, they're not they're not the same.
But by right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and I was trying to get Bill to help me with the language. Excuse me, our applicant.
And and maybe we should clarify just really quickly, because that particular section applies to accessory data centers, which would be by right. So.
Yeah.
The language to make those three conditions, so to speak, um, not waivable would not then make them subject to a special permit. It would just make them not eligible for a special exception. And the only thing to think about is there's so many conditions that are unforeseen. So, for example, look at A one rumor Roman numerate. I, the first one, number one. What if by for financing reasons, they have to have it on a separate parcel? Or or numerate two? They have to contract out the operation of the data center and the primary business is not operating it themselves. So I can just envision a lot of circumstances that might lead to somebody seeking an exception to that.
So complicated.
It is complicated. I'm trying to envision all this, you know.
I had a, just going back to to an earlier question I had in terms of multiple forty thousand and the public just brought it up as well. So how would we tighten that up so that so we couldn't wind up with?
You you don't need to do anything specific. We we've already committed to doing that. We will, we will. Our our intent was that it be forty thousand. We hear that your intent is that it's forty thousand, but we'll take care of it. We'll make sure that either the existing language is adequate or that the uh we'll propose new language, and this will be reflected in the comments sent to the board.
Before it goes to the board to vote on.
Yes, 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 okay.
So would that also go for the the other comment uh that Mr. Butler made about um data centers? That he suggested we add something to the effect that data centers may not in aggregate exceed forty thousand square feet.
That's.
That's it.
Yeah, that's that's what we're just talking about.
Okay, so we don't have to make a motion to.
No, if if you're more comfortable including that in your motion, absolutely, but but we hear you loud and clear and and that was our intent, and we will clarify.
Okay.
Could I just clarify a couple of things procedurally? So this, unlike the prior application, this in fact is not an application. So in fact, Mr. Fritz and Ms. McCully, that are not applicants. So the timeline is not applied in anything, and they're not applicants. Furthermore, uh, since this is coming to the planning commission for its recommendation, the planning commission certainly can uh make recommended changes to whatever, say, we recommended approval with the following changes. So there is a little difference procedurally between between an applicant initiated petition, such as you received previously, and this that's being brought before you by staff at the request of the board supervisors.
That's helpful. Thanks.
But we also are hearing staff say that we've heard you. Yeah, so we're going to include those modifications. So.
I mean, I'm comfortable with that.
I am too. I mean, because when staff, it has been proven that staff really does hear us.
But I'm not going to thank the applicant, is what you're saying. Okay.
They're not the applicant, they're staff.
Yeah. Did we talk about the twenty five percent of the gross floor area and the impacts of a larger facility also increasing this the size of the support systems and structure and structures?
Would would is the intent there that if you have like a two hundred thousand square foot facility that couldn't go more than forty thousand square feet of of data center on it?
Yeah.
If if that's if that's what you're, if you want to make sure that no accessory data center exceed forty thousand square feet, you can just tell us that's what you'd like us to do, and we will take a look at that, and we can you make that as part of your motion, and we will we will prepare an amended ordinance that says that.
I don't want to. I am not in favor of that. Okay, I just want to make sure we address that issue.
Even even so, just to help with how we how we carry this forward to the board of supervisors, if the board, if the planning commission does not make a motion to limit it, we will still include in our our summary of this meeting that there was some discussion about potentially limiting it. So they they will know that that was a topic of conversation.
Awesome. That's good. Thank you. Any other questions or discussion?
You know, I I mean, I'm sort of trying to give as much, well, not as much sort of, but if we really survive the present sort of cuts that are coming, I could actually see a data center up north of town in the property that they just that we just sort of secured. And so in an attempt to diversify our tax base so that it's not simply dependent on real estate, I'd like to give everyone, staff and and supervisors, an opportunity to sort of entertain something that might be that, you know, that might be helpful on that line. And so I think our staff recognize that we're not giving carte blanche and we're hopefully not going to be orange.
Yeah.
County um and and sort of the way they're approaching things.
But a larger data center can come forward in the future as an SUP.
Correct.
Absolutely. So we're not stopping any.
Yeah.
Application, and I'm sure it would might anyway, depending what they think.
Right.
About the favorability of Alamo County's.
At this particular point in time, yeah.
Yeah. All right, do we need a motion on this?
We do.
And there it is.
Well.
It's coming.
There's this and the and if you if Commissioner Firehawk's amendment to five one six five as a as five one six five E, uh, you could add that to this motion.
And it would it would be, I I move to recommend approval of CMA. The the adopt is unnecessary.
Like there's only one.
Didn't cut the right words.
Would anybody like to move to recommend approval of ZTA twenty twenty four dash two?
I'll do it.
Could we hear the E again, please? I'd like to know.
I'm going to say it as part of the motion. I'm going to add that to my motion. I I'm I move to recommend approval of this text amendment of ZTA two O two four dash zero two with the addition to clause five one six five E, A one, B one, that they may not be modified or waived by special exception.
That that is that uh five one six five E, read uh subsections A one or B one may not be modified or waived by special exception. Is that your motion?
Yes, sir, as you stated.
All right, we have a motion. We have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, may we have the roll, please?
Mr. Missile?
Hi.
Mr. Harazana?
Hi.
Ms. Firehawk?
Hi.
Mr. Murray?
Hi.
Mr. Bivens?
Hi.
Mr. Moore?
Hi.
Great. Thank you. Thank you both. Not as applicants, but for just joining us tonight.
Yes.
It was so nice to see you.
All right, uh, we are now moving to the AFDs. And I believe that we have agreed that we would have a combined staff report for all of these. Uh, how many are there? Seven?
I think there are five or seven.
Eight.
Eight. Uh, and that we would have a combined public hearing as well.
Oh, we will.
What do you mean by combined?
Public hearing so that we'll have a staff report and we'll talk about all of them, right?
Oh, I see.
And we'll open it up for a public hearing.
All of them.
Yep, and then we will have to make separate motions for each one.
Thank you, Chair. That is correct.
Great. Thank you.
It's a very cold water invitation.
Okay, I think we are ready. Are we ready?
Yes.
Great. Um, so we'll begin. Well, like I said, we're combining all the staff reports, so I I'll just say the AFDs. How's that?
Thank you.
Open up the staff. Thank you.
Um, good evening, Commissioners. I'm James Van Brinken, planner in the Conservation Program. I'm joined by Michael Barnes, Director of Planning, and Scott Clark, Conservation Program Manager, to answer questions you may have. We're here for a group of agricultural and forestal district reviews. You might remember we had a similar group of these back in December. Um, it's the same process. This time, we just had a whole bunch of district reviews come up at the same time. We've decided to split them in half to make it more manageable. The Board of Supervisors reviewed that first batch of districts last week. Um, and they voted to follow the staff recommendation and the planning commission recommendation, which I'll go into more detail about um in a little bit. First, I wanted to give some um context, some background for the conservation program. So you can think of parcels in the rural area falling into three broad categories. The first category, we're calling regular parcels. That's the default. That's parcels not in any conservation program. Um, the second category is parcels in temporary conservation. County currently has two of those programs, um, including the AFD program. The third category is permanently conserved, permanently protected land. Those are parcels under conservation easement. Um, people understandably often confuse how conservation programs interact with tax programs. Um, so just to run through it quickly, the regular parcels are eligible for, um, in general, three tax categories. Most of them are in regular taxation and full market tax. They can also qualify for two forms of land use tax through active agriculture use or forestry plan. Parcels in an AFD can also get these three um tax categories that you see on the screen, and being in an AFD does not affect that. They still, if they want land use, they still have to do that active use or the forestry plan. There are still parcels in AFDs that get regular, um, that pay regular fair market tax. Um, the only difference is that parcels in AFDs, if they're of a certain size, can qualify for the third type of land use, um, which is open space. That's a kind of conservation related land use tax category. And just to finish it off, open space use agreement parcels also qualify for open space. Conservation easements are taxed slightly differently, but for all intents and purposes, it's equivalent to land use for almost all conservation easements. So zooming back into the AFD program, this is a voluntary land conservation program that involves a five to ten year commitment from landowners, gives them certain benefits, including things like extra layer of review for special use permits adjacent to them. Um, and that aforementioned open space tax rate, although most parcels in AFDs don't use it. Um, there are also some benefits to the county, the main one being uh landowners are prohibited from using any of their small lot development rights. Very quick refresher, you'll remember that the buy right lot size in the rural area is twenty one acres. Small lot development rights can be thought of as exceptions to that where they can build lots or they can create lots smaller than twenty one acres, as small as two acres. And those two to twenty one acre lots are not permitted in AFDs, except in the case of family subdivisions. That's that's a small exception. So here we have two theoretical maximum scenarios. This is just theoretical, but hopefully. So here we have two theoretical maximum scenarios. This is just theoretical, but hopefully outlines for you kind of the main conservation value of these AFD programs. Districts must be reviewed every five to 10 years. And the items listed here are the relevant criteria for those reviews. Item seven regarding development rights has been of particular focus over the last year. This item states that it is county policy not to include parcels without development rights in AFDs. The concern that led to the creation of that policy is that parcels were accessing this open space land use, the conservation related tax category, without necessarily having any smaller development rights being protected by their membership in an AFD. So staff has made recommendations for the renewal of these districts consistent with that policy. The advisory committee has given a different recommendation stating that parcels without development rights should not be removed from the districts. The difference there is obviously in the last two rows, parcels without development rights. The staff recommendation is to remove those parcels either immediately if they're not facing any rollback taxes or give them a five year notice period if they would face rollback taxes to give them an opportunity to change their tax status. So staff is recommending they be removed. The committee is recommending that they be kept in the districts. So I'll go very quickly through the individual districts. You'll see the maps here. Parcels highlighted in pink are those recommended for removal. Highlighted in blue are those recommended to get that five year notice period. And so they would stay temporarily in the districts. Parcels highlighted in green are those that have been requested for withdrawal. You'll remember that during the district review is the only time landowners can withdraw from the districts by right. We heard last time in December, some concerns from the commission about the, the potential for erosion of the districts. Because of this policy, we wanted to just highlight and clarify that the parcels being recommended for removal, the parcels in pink and blue here are mostly already developed and the erosion in that sense has already happened. That's the erosion of the rural area that we're trying to protect or trying to prevent with these conservation programs. And mostly they have no conservation value to keep them in. If they do have conservation value through their size or quality of habitat, flood plains, et cetera, they can be conserved. They're, they're eligible for other conservation programs, which will do a better job of protecting them. As an example, here you'll see the large pink parcel up here. It's 130 acre parcel. It has a lot of conservation value. It just happens not to have any smaller development rights. So the AFD isn't doing anything to, to conserve it. But it is eligible for other programs and it happens to be in an open space use agreement.
Can I ask you a question? Sorry to interrupt, but.
Of course.
The requested withdrawals, those who are requesting withdrawals, they don't necessarily have no development rights, right? They might have some development rights and they can. Do you, do you, what, what would be the reason other than the desire to develop? What's the reason that they would ask for withdrawal?
Most of the time it's a desire to develop.
Yeah.
A couple of times it's just a landowner wanting to simplify, get rid of some paperwork. Those are the only two reasons I've encountered.
Good to know. Thank you.
And along those lines, since you asked a question, I want to ask one. The, the parcel you were just speaking of that you said had conservation value. Is, but are you then saying that is not being actively farmed or timbered? It is not, not really being used for agriculture?
This is being, I don't know if it's currently being used for agriculture. It certainly has recently been used for agriculture. I believe they're intending to keep using it for agriculture. The con, the main conservation value I'm talking about there is because of its size, it has the potential for six or seven subdivision lots by right, 21 acre subdivision lots, regardless of its use.
Okay, but it, it's, it's being recommended for withdrawal because it doesn't have development?
The small lot, the small lot development rights.
Has no existing small lot development rights?
Correct.
Okay.
And so just very quickly to go through these districts, I won't go through all of this data. It's summarized in a table at the end. First is the Mormons River District, by far the largest district in the county. Contains just over 11,000 acres. For context, that's about 3,200 Coscos. And it's between Charlottesville and Croze, just mostly to the north of Garth Road. Next, we have the Keswick District, just over 7,000 acres to the east of Charlottesville, north of Keswick. Kinlock is about 1,700 acres to the north and northeast of Sismont. We can come back to these if you need more time to, to read them. Fourth, we have Fox Mountain, a small one with only five parcels. This is north of Whitehall, near the start of Blackwell's Hollow Road. Buck's Elbow Mountain, it's about 3,200 acres northwest of Croze bordering the National Park. Sugar Hollow is just shy of 5,000 acres. Close to Sugar Hollow, roughly north and south of Sugar Hollow Road. And finally Buck Mountain is in the far north of the county on, on Davis Shop Road. That's just shy of 500 acres. That data is summarized here in this table. The first columns are the current district sizes and parcels and acres. Then those requested withdrawals, the recommended removals and the resultant size. And the final column there is the recommended renewal period, either five or 10 years. And I'm happy at this point to take any questions.
Yes.
So in reviewing the list, there's a few, and I'm not going to list all of them. I just say, for example, ones where they were really small, like so, for example, Buck's Elbow Mountain, MFF, MMF Holdings LLC, two acres. How can the two acre parcel be in our ag forestal district? That just strikes me as too small to be more than a large garden.
So the policy not to allow parcels without smaller development rights, which would include all the two acre parcels, was adopted in 2016. And before that, there wasn't a policy for that. Parcels were assessed based on their values and, and the other criteria. It's possible that that two acre parcel is part of a larger parcel and they just put the whole in at one time.
Okay. Cause it, and maybe sold, I mean, it's a different name. Cause I did consider that. I thought, are there three here that have the same name? Cause I, I live on a 1.78 acre parcel in the county, but it's actually three parcels that make up that 1.78. None of them are big enough, really. It's just from the oldie days of parcels that they're all ridiculously small. So I, you know, I was just trying to figure out if this was just a, something that was attached to something larger, but it doesn't look like it. So.
It's also possible that it was created after the larger parcel had joined the AFD. They did a.
And they, they.
They maybe did a family subdivision.
Or put a house on it that, and then maybe sold it to MF whatever. Okay. That would make more sense. Cause I'm, I'm just trying to, I, I do know what AFDs are and how they work. And so I was just trying to imagine that coming before the AFD board and them saying, we'd love to have your two acre farm at in our, okay. So that's, so some of those must be remnants like that. Okay. That, that clears that up.
On your example, Karen, do we know, do we know with that two acre parcel would, would actually get open space? Probably not, right? So is this still regularly taxable or?
Just says it's regular taxable.
Oh, okay. That's.
So. It just struck, I just was really surprised to see some really tiny parcels in the lists. And I tried to understand how that ever came before the board, but being split off maybe to put a single family house on of a larger parcel or being sold, you know, that explains it, I guess.
As long as we don't have like two acre parcels that are getting open space tax breaks, that, that would be unfortunate.
Here comes Scott to give us the history.
You're saying I'm old?
No, but you know, you've been doing these for so long.
I'm Scott Clark. I'm the Conservation Program Manager. I'm filling in with insufficient capacity to do so for Mr. Lynch, the county assessor. Any parcel, whether it qualifies through being in an AFD or otherwise, for the open space tax rate has to have at least 20 acres of open space land.
That's what I thought.
So no, none of these sub 20 acre parcels are going to be able to, to qualify for that particular.
Right. There's another five acre one in that particular list, for example.
Yeah. Also for Commissioner Firehawk's question, in the early days of creation of these districts, a lot of this was done by neighbors encouraging each other. And so a lot of people would apply. Yeah. A, a lot of small parcels were added along with the bigger parcels as kind of a community effort. So there are.
Making contiguous.
Yeah. And there may have been two or four or five acre parcels that joined with little effect.
Right.
But also no particular part of the program.
Yeah. I mean, from the, there's not so many of them that it crashed the county's tax base. But it did, it did give them a lower tax rate, right?
No, 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 no.
It just let them be in the district.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. To be clear, you can be in an, you could be an AFD parcel and do regular taxation. A matter of fact, many of the parcels are.
That's right.
That's right. In this table, there's only one that says ag and forestry and once it's forestry, now the other ones say regular taxable. Okay. But yeah, it's, it's just odd. Cause I do understand about, there is a, there is a logic that does nothing to do with development rights that has to do with if you want to have a successful farming district and you want to have critical mass of farmers and farms so that you can have, like, we used to have a farm and we borrowed the neighbor's tractor. Well, if there hadn't been a next door neighbor farm, we wouldn't have had a tractor to use. Or we needed someone to come spread manure. That was another neighbor. So the, 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 having contiguous farm parcels in a district was helpful to being a farmer or farming. But if you're just a two acre parcel in there, you're not farming, you know, you're not, you're not really doing anything. I don't, I don't really get it. Okay.
Can I hear when you say spread manure, you're not even going to have bio solids, are you?
No, of course not. Cow poo from the.
And I would just add too, that even if it's a much larger parcel, but with no development rights, there's nothing that'll keep it from being a farm. You know, even if it's not in the one to the districts.
Yeah. I think just to underline that, there are some parcels in this one that are fairly large, have no development rights. And if that reason will be removed under this policy, but since they're so large, they can come back. If they're, they're farming as a regular parcel, they can still access land use taxation.
Exactly.
And so I think, I think it's an important thing. The, the juxtaposition here really mostly sits upon parcels that have no development rights. I mean, I, I will also add that let us, let us also keep in mind, and I, I speak from personal experience here, that districts were used as a way to prevent the county and the Commonwealth from doing things. Because you have to seek permission from the district to be able to do certain in, what do they call them?
I think you're referring to road takings primarily.
No.
Special use permits?
No, the, if I wanted to put a road through something, this is what happened west, west of me. Is I, cause I got invited to be in one of these, one of these districts way back when the bypass was going through so that there would be enough land that the county or VDOT could not go through it.
Well, that's true for conservation.
And I said, yeah.
That, that. But I don't know that that's true for AFDs.
It was part of, the whole thing was to get us to do conservation easements.
Yeah, that's, that's different.
But then to go into the one that you took away, because there were no longer any land in it any longer, the Ivy, the, or whatever, the Ivy.
Ivy Creek.
Yeah, the Ivy Creek one.
The Mr. Chair. Commissioner Firehawk said the conservation easements have a lot of effect on those road takings. AFDs don't prevent them. They just add a layer of review by the state.
I, I do understand that.
Yeah. And you, and some, some of our develop, some of our applications for just development to this body, there were times where something with like solar panels. And then the AF, because that farm was in the AFD, then the AFD said, yes, that has, no, basically they said, no, there's no effect from that. So they, they did come and have a, a opinion.
Right.
But it didn't have any like legal. We just take it under advisement. Thanks, Scott.
If I might ask James to put the slide back on the screen with the ordinance provisions. There we go. And if I, if I, I mean, I, I understand and appreciate the commission's curiosity into the rationale behind the ordinance amendments that were made in 2016 and 2018. But I'd really suggest that the commission focus its attention on the ordinance criteria and specifically subsection 201 F7 and the highlighted provision. I think really that's the, I, I remember when the, the last batch of AFDs came before the, the commission. Uh, I think the chair's question is on what basis should we be considering these? And so what I would suggest is that the commission focus on the ordinance here, rather than sort of go behind the curtain and debate the, the merits of, of the ordinance that the board adopted close to seven years ago now.
Ideally, that is what we would do.
But I do have, I do have a question.
We'll be sure to follow the code, but I, I just think it is important to understand the purpose of an AFD is, is broader.
This has been really helpful.
And give us some slack. You know, we've had to deal with what, what Parks and Rec and with, you know, what Mercedes Benz is trying to not fall off the cliff, you know, so we're having a little kitten fun here right now.
Well, we're going to cut your ha, your lunch in half next time.
That's fine. You may have my lunch. Remember I've always said, if you don't want to feed me, I'm cool. Yeah. I know how to play that game. I do have a question. You talked about, you gave us this thing about, about family subdivisions. It's always bothered me. How do we know that the person who's getting the house is actually a member of the family? And then what happens when that family member, that putative family member shuffles off their mortal coil and the house goes to somebody else? What's the tracking? And then what's the, what's, I mean, because we are giving, we are providing, this is, you, you don't know. I, my whole thing is when I get, when the county gives something, I want to make sure that they're actually tracing this thing to be able to recoup the dollars when things go west.
So I was looking behind me to see if Bill was still here, um, cause he can answer this better than I can, but the subdivision ordinance has specific standards for family subdivision, not just about how the subdivision process is done, but also to establish holding periods before you can do a family division and after. So on the plat for a subdivision, for lots that have been created by family subdivision, you'll see notes regarding that. So in Almarle, you have to have owned the land for four years before you can do a family subdivision. The state allows up to 15, I think.
But we do.
We're for. Once you've done the division and transferred it to a family member, it has to stay in that family member's hands for four more years. And
that's interesting.
Yeah. So there's a question though. Is that long enough? Do we want to go longer? That's definitely more to do with the subdivision ordinance than it is specifically to do with AFDs.
You know, my, my point on that, and I knew I'd read this, I'd read it. So this is where I really, I wanted you to say that. So I could say this. So in a place that, that prides itself on generational land ownership, four years is a spit in the bucket. And so my piece is, and this is not for tonight, but this is just, I'm saying this, we lose a lot of money by leakage. And the county does not have that many options by which to halt, by which to close those, that, that leakage. And so, you know, for instance, I've been in my house for over 30 years. I easily could have subdivided the two acre, the two, two acre lots in front of me, which I didn't do, but I should have done that. And, and then, and then sold it. So there's, there's all of the, and we're a sophisticated community too. That's the other thing. We're a very sophisticated community of which people understand, well, I can tell, look. Of which people. Of which people understand how to maximize. Their return and minimize their taxes. And so.
I would just point out, however, that those two acre lots created by. Family subdivision, whether or not they're in an AFD are still not going to qualify for a reduced tax rate.
I'm, 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 I just, I'm using, I used his comment about family to make my point about. Family divisions costly, and we don't track them. And so.
Maybe that's a, a conversation for another time when we get to our rural area plan.
Yeah, I, I would.
Didn't we just have that?
No.
Oh, the rural area plan.
Yes, where the comp, where, where we said we needed to plan more for the rural area, but it would be a bigger effort. So there's a goal now in the comp plan to have a rural plan later.
Thank you.
Phase two.
Yes, okay, phase two. So we should, I, I just suggest we. Enjoying your, your monologue, but I'm just suggest that we move that to another time.
Any other questions for staff? No questions for staff. Okay, great, let's rock and roll through these. So we are gonna open it up for the public to, to open the public hearing to see if there's anybody who would like to speak to this matter in public. Being none here, are there any online? Closing the public hearing. Thank you.
Great, I have a question. Yeah, I want to, yeah, no, not gonna go testify as a farmer. You know, I just had, I had a question, so. The, this, there was something in the staff notes that like this went to the Board of Supervisors. Because we got off schedule.
Yeah.
Is that what we're saying? This already, the board already voted on this?
Just very clearly, we have two sets of.
Okay.
We had the last batch.
First batch went.
Okay, I got it.
Did that.
I was, I was apted for that one.
Yeah.
So I don't remember that batch, because I wasn't here. Okay, got it, thank you.
And that was a very helpful conversation, the Board of Supervisors, which.
Yeah.
Which Chair Missile. You, you passed on some of that. Information or the link.
Oh, yeah, right, alright.
Yes, over the years, I've had multiple emails about. The division rights and whether they exist, and what ordinance says, and what is the basis for this decision. I remain aware.
All right, well, let's move through these, we need to make a motion, have a second, and then. Discussion and then a vote. So why don't we start with AFD two thousand twenty-four dash eight Keswick District Review? Would anybody like to make a motion? What are we motioning to?
Except the recommended removals, I guess.
Thank you. Would anybody like to?
Yes.
If it's your, your district.
I move to recommend renew, renewal of the Keswick District for a five year period with the staff recommendations. With the staff recommended removals.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll, please.
Yes, Mr. Missile. Aye. Mr. Carizano.
Aye.
Ms. Firehawk.
Aye.
Mr. Bivens.
Aye.
Mr. Murray.
Aye.
Mr. Moore.
Aye.
Thank you.
Was it an I or an A? I couldn't hear that one, sorry.
Aye.
Alright, thank you.
Sorry.
All right, do we have another motion for this one?
All right, I move to recommend renewal of the Mormons River District for a five year period with the requested withdrawals. And staff recommended removals.
For a second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Missile.
Aye.
Mr. Carizano.
Aye.
Firehawk.
Aye.
Mr. Bivens.
Aye.
Mr. Murray.
Aye.
Mr. Moore.
Aye.
Kenlock District would be like to have a, somebody like to make a motion.
I move to recommend renewal of the Kenlock District for a five year period with the requested withdrawals. And staff's recommended removals.
For a second. Second. Discussion. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Missile.
Aye.
Mr. Carizano.
Aye.
Ms. Firehawk.
Aye.
Mr. Bivens.
Aye.
Mr. Murray.
Aye.
Mr. Moore.
Aye.
Like to make a motion on the Fox Mountain District Review.
Yeah. I moved to recommend renewal of the Fox Mountain District for a ten year period with the staff recommended removals.
For a second.
Second.
Any time, any discussion? The roll, please.
Mr. Missile.
Aye.
Mr. Carizano.
Aye.
Ms. Firehawk.
Aye.
Mr. Bivens.
Aye.
Mr. Murray.
Aye.
Mr. Moore.
Aye.
Anybody like to make a motion on Buck's Elbow Mountain District?
Not my district.
I think it's, I think it's me.
Doesn't really matter, it's you.
Think you should.
So, anyway, I recommend renewal of the Buck's Elbow Mountain District for a ten year period with the staff recommended removals.
For a second.
Second.
A conversation?
We have. Mr. Missile.
Aye.
Mr. Carizano.
Aye.
Ms. Firehawk.
Aye.
Mr. Bivens.
Aye.
Mr. Murray.
Aye.
Mr. Moore.
Aye.
Almost done, Sugar Hollow District Review.
I move to recommend renewal of the Sugar Hollow District for a five year period with the rec, requested withdrawal and staff recommended removals.
Second. Second, we have a second. Any discussion? Roll, please.
Mr. Missile.
Aye.
Mr. Carizano.
Aye.
Ms. Firehawk.
Aye.
Ms. Bivens.
Aye.
Bivens.
Aye.
Murray.
Aye.
Mr. Moore.
Aye.
One more, Bucks Mountain District Review.
Okay.
I move to recommend removal. I move to recommend renewal of Buck Mountain District for a ten year period with the staff recommended re, removals.
Second.
We have a second, any discussion?
Sorry, who's the second? I couldn't hear that. Uh, Mr. Moore at the second.
Thank you.
Mr. Missile.
Aye.
Mr. Carizano.
Aye.
Ms. Firehawk.
Aye.
Mr. Bivens.
Aye.
Mr. Murray.
Aye.
And Mr. Moore.
Aye.
Great work, staff.
Thank you.
Thank you, I know that was quick, a bunch of. Motions and votes, but lots of great work, thank you. All right, we'll move on to committee reports. Are there any committee reports? Mine was officially canceled. Oh, good for you, because of icy roads.
I have one. The Historic Preservation Committee met. Yes, and we agreed to our rules of procedure and elected officers, we had stump speeches. Parades, kidding. We did increase our membership. So thanks to the folks who helped get the, helped me get the word out to encourage others to apply. We, we have lots more people, which means lots of good ideas and energy, so we're. And, and easier to make quorum as well. And then the main, so they did a lot of that, and then the main order of business was. Looking at language for a historic marker honoring Benjamin Yancey. Of Yancey School fame. And to put that at the school, and it talks about the colored high school and the elementary school, and so. And with text on both sides and their busy wordsmithing, but it, it's mostly done, so that one. Will go up, and I didn't even know that BF Yancey was born in Howardsville. So I am ignorant, and I am now not ignorant of that, I'm excited. Yeah, he was a wonderful educator and a great man. So, that's great, and then there was also some educational signage for Biscuit Run, but. We weren't provided any of the graphics or pictures, so it was very hard to give staff suggestions. And somehow it was an emergency and we only had three days to give them comments. And, and no visuals, so we were unable to give them comments, so I don't know what precipitated a sign emergency. But we requested that next time we have more, more time to give input. It, it, it came to us because it, it talks about the history of the site.
Oh, okay.
And, you know, it's, but it wasn't very, very well thought out. That's it.
Thank you. Any other committee reports?
Yes, oh, well, go ahead.
Uh, the Jack Truitt one, we had a presentation, those of you who know where the. Telephone company used to hold all of its trucks over there on Hydraulic Road.
Yeah.
Okay, that apparently has been sold. By the telephone company and has been sold to someone who is developing it to allow Ferguson's. To hold their large water stuff there. So, big, big tubes. Yeah, big, what have you got, big.
A lot of color, but something they have downtown near.
It's even bigger than that, it's hydrants and.
Yeah.
The thing for the kinds of things that you two do.
Like a storage yard, yeah.
Yeah, but it's to sell to, sell to contractors, and Ferguson's renting it from somebody out of town. And it's, you know, it's reusing that piece of property that otherwise would have. Gone bad, so that'll come before us, I don't know when, you'll know when it is, but I don't. But it's, it's reusing a piece of property which one of our colleagues likes to do. Thank you.
Yes, so I attended the NPO tech meeting, and, and then also, so we reviewed the Unified Planning Work Program. And then, one of the most interesting things that they talked about was there's an intersection safety. Program, they have these, these smart monitoring systems that they're looking, they can, they can look for pedestrians and near misses with vehicles on the cameras. And right now, these don't do anything, they're just gathering data. But the idea is eventually after, you know, if, if we can gather enough data from these, these cameras, then maybe we can actually start to. Adjust the lights dynamically to prevent things like crashes or.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so it's, it's really interesting, interesting project. There's, there's gonna be one at Alderman McCormick, one at Hydraulic Lambs, Old Ivy. And the US twenty-nine row overpass. There's also a smart scale recommendation review. And one of, one of the takeaways that I thought was interesting was that there was. Maintenance and operations increased because of all the snow that we had. Which, which meant, meant a, a, a decrease. In the, in construction funding. Is also out of the, the Culpeper District, out of twenty-four applications. Partially because of, you know, there's not a lot of funding, only, only four are being recommended, so.
Thought it was interesting too, the amount of money that's being spent on the application process.
Oh, I, that, I, I missed that.
A lot. All right, any others? Okay. Move over to review of Board of Supervisors meeting. Your Barnes?
Um, thank you very much, Chair. There have been three meetings since we last met on the twenty-eighth. That the board had scheduled, the first was on February fifth, three items that have been, before you all went. Passed them, one was the Carter Machinery Outdoor and Storage and Display, which is over, you'll call it next to the library, Alpha Rio. That did pass with the commission, I went through the board with a six oh vote. Another item was the City Church that was on Rio Road, you'll recall that was the one that had the relatively large parking fields. That went five one with Mr. Keel voting actually against it, and. Lodge Park was the.
You know why?
Parking issues.
Oh.
And then finally Buck Island Solar. Was passed six oh that evening. The second meeting was on February twelfth. But it was a snow day, so we actually canceled that meeting. The intent was that it was a special session to. Come back and bring, the board was really, they've had some great discussions on the Development Area Land Use Chapter, the Rural Area Land Use Chapter. As well as stuff related back to the growth management policy, and we're getting a lot of discussion from them, and, as, you know, you'll recall, we, we kind of worked on this first key. Chapters as we, we. Yeah, it was, and we would bring them, the, the narrative section, as we talk about the policy and then the actions. And I think as we went through it, they, they wanted to kind of go back and see all of those comments, and the comments that you all had put into theirs, of something we got from the public. Integrated into a revised set of chapters. We'll provide those to you all, I think my staff already actually has, I hope that they have. I will double check, I think they probably had, and if not, I'll make sure that they did. That the intent there was to talk really about the growth management chapter. And the Development Area Land Use, the Rural Area Land Use Chapter. I'll give you a little bit of highlights of those things, I think one of the big things in the growth management chapter was a discussion about. They're sort of talking about the board, is there a need to sort of true up the boundaries, there may be some places that are sort of underperforming. Areas that are either have significant environmental resources on the sites or. Places like Keswick where they may not ever achieve sort of the intended densities out there. And does it make sense to sort of have a criteria to reduce the development area in there, maybe expand it. In some other places to sort of accommodate the, the development that we had. This was not a, an actual discussion of what boundaries, what parcels would they move in and out, but just one of the large contextual. Idea of having a set of like parameters to where we might reduce it. Or enlarge it, places like that have. Significant water capacity or transportation capacity, those types of things. So that was an interesting discussion.
So, just on, on that note, if, or I can hold my question at the end if you want.
No, it's fine, please.
Okay, so, so, so on that, it, it's, it's an interesting turnabout, because, you know. For a long time, we had talked about no expansion of the development area, but this clearly seems to be opening. The way for an expansion of the development area. One of the, the concerns, well, well, first I hope that this will come back to us, so we can have a full discussion about the notion of, of development area swaps. But I mean, some of the concerns I have are that, you know, when you look at all these properties cumulatively. For example, you know, areas, areas with floodplains were mentioned, areas with critical slopes, areas that are parks. Areas that didn't develop to maximum density. But that's a sizable amount of acreage that one could use to justify a significant expansion of the development areas. And I understand that some people are saying that like. When you're talking about just swapping one parcel here or there, or making tiny adjustments. That I could possibly get behind, but without adequate guardrails, it, it is a bit concerning. That you could use that as just a justification for a, a big expansion of the, the development areas.
And we, we got a lot of emails coming in around the time where they were having that discussion, and I wondered. What, it, it was strange to me that it was like. That they were having that discussion that I didn't know they were gonna be having, I guess. I, you know, a lot of citizens contacted us, and like, what are you doing?
To your point.
Yeah, I mean.
And, and, and I'm, I think, I understand that was part of the discussion. And I think, and when staff was bringing that forward, I don't really think it was really the intent, I mean, I think that. It's, one of, one of the things that was brought up was the floodplain in the, the Ravanna, you know, associated with some of the subdivisions there. I don't think it's what we're talking about, there, there are a couple of parcels that are. Yeah, they have mountain top, top protection on the parcel, they have lots of critical slopes. And they're just, they don't, there was one that we were actually looking at that, that. Sort of fit into that criteria, it wasn't really the intent, I think part of what really was driving a lot of this conversation. Was, a lot of it really, I think it was coming out of the Keswick area. Or Barvanna Village in particular.
So, I mean, in, in terms of our event of village, we're, we've are committed to providing water and sewer to those areas, right? So the big thing that controls the big thing that keeps the development area, the development area and the rural area rural, is the provision of water and sewer. So unless we can go in there and rip out the water and sewer. You know, it's not really a swap, because we've already given the big carrot that makes it development area. So. In my mind, that's just a flat out, that'd just be a flat out expansion. Now, there are some areas, like, I, I've, looking at the maps, I've always wondered. Why the area in Fontaine, you know, where Observatory Hill is, and you know, you have the, down towards the reservoir there. Why that's development area, that never made sense to me, because it's, it's really steep and mountainous. Maybe the UVA Foundation could, could answer at some point, like. Did they, did they request that be development area, or just someone just draw a nice little circle and just put it in there? But. There are areas like that, that there could be some reasonable discussions, should that have ever been development area, but even that, that's a large area. If you were to like take that out, trying to find a replacement.
Yeah, but I, I think that, yeah, I think you certainly could make the case that we could do a more nuanced evaluation, because, yeah, there's like some places in the development area that are like. Really vertical slopes, or you'd have to do a significant rock blasting. Just to get anything flat enough to put anything on. You know, it's like, that's not really development land, so, you know. Do you then expand somewhere else to make up for the fact that that's not real? That, that this mountain thing isn't real.
How will the Planning Commission be engaged in that discussion?
So our intent is not to bring those chapters back to you at this time. We, if, so the game plan here is that we're gonna go through the, through all ten chapters. And then, you know, remember there's three parts to this, there's sort of an introductory portion, the second part really talks about the growth management policy, and then there's the ten chapters. And then, you know, remember there's three parts to this. There's sort of an introductory portion, the second part really talks about the growth management policy and then there's ten chapters.
Yeah.
So our intent is really to get through those and then bringing them back to you uh, July timeframe as a package. You'll get to see them again. The intent was here, we were really getting from the board a request that, hey, we've heard a lot, we've had a lot of discussion, we've heard from the planning commission, and they wanted to see sort of staff census of all that discussion.
How will we track? That's good to know. Will there be a way, or maybe we should just think about having a way to know what changed? As opposed to getting like a set of documents that we all look at and go, I can't remember, was that in there? Wasn't it in there? And then we start comparing them to old versions. So, you know, like your cloud drawings when you make changes to drawings. I don't know if there's a way.
Red line version of the changes.
Kind of, yeah.
The major changes to the structure since we did the development.
Just something that somehow helps us track.
The staff has been keeping like pretty good tabs on what they're changing.
Yeah.
May not be quite on a red line version.
That's fine, whatever. Just something that helps to, you know, kind of help us understand what's changed.
Yes, sir. Makes sense. So the other thing they talked about was rural area land use chapter. A considerable discussion in that about um, the non-residential uses and, and the rural area. We actually did not end up getting to the development area chapter that day.
Oh, really?
So we are going to bring that back to them on April second, I believe. Will be the date that we'll come back to, to the board to talk about the revised to, to an area land use chapter.
Great, thank you.
And um, so before I got a little bit ahead of myself, since it was a snow day, we went to the nineteenth and talked about that. The other two items on the nineteenth that might have been interest to you, there was a presentation on easements. And a lot of that was information you all be familiar with, but the, the bedrock of that presentation was the slides that you saw that upon the infographic, which kind of like takes the rural area and puts you three different parcels. And so that's Nick that along with some other discussion about what are easements was um, was requested. And so we provided that to, to the board. And then the final thing was they, on the nineteenth, they took the, the first tranche of the AFD uh, those eight districts. And at that one, they reconfirmed their policy of the, the removal of the parcels based on the zero lot uh, criteria.
Great, good summary. Thanks. AC forty-four update?
So we uh, have a schedule, um, finally. And I will, Tanya is going to release that, I think she said on Friday this week. So we'll do that. And I'll make sure that she hasn't already, I think she did, give you guys these other chapters, but it ones where I just referenced. And if she hasn't, I will make sure that that comes out in the packet for you on Friday as well.
The, that schedule or part of it wasn't included in Tori's presentation, wasn't it at the beginning?
Yeah, I think she gave you, she gave you an idea of what the next uh, couple of items are.
I didn't, I wasn't able to write it.
And I tried to take a picture of it.
I know.
Let me, just give me two seconds and I'll give that to you.
You could just send us that.
Well, I'm happy to, but I'm sure you, you're kind of curious and I'm sure you will. Or you could let me get that to you tomorrow.
We could all.
Here it is. Right, so for the planning commission, uh, I'll just give you the next three that are coming to you. Thriving Economy will be uh, on three eleven, our next meeting.
Sorry, I didn't hear what that one was.
Thriving, Thriving Economy.
Thriving Economy, okay.
Economic Development.
Okay.
Uh, Community Facilities and Infrastructure on three twenty-five. Housing on three twenty, or excuse me, on four eight. And then we will hold a special meeting in the middle of the month on transportation. That'll be a, a longer discussion. It'll be the only item on that one on four fifteen. Uh, again, I'll give you the stuff written out, but uh, the Historic Cultural and City Resources as well as the final one of Community Resiliency, both will be May thirteenth. So we're aiming to wrap up the ten chapters, you all then and wrap up the ten chapters with uh, the board on June fourth.
Great.
Again, after we do that, we'll be, we need to do some more public interaction. We have been doing public interaction. I think we have a lunch and learn. We've done multiple ways to reach out to the public. We have a lunch and learn session where people can listen in as they talk about thriving economy. I think that's uh, this Thursday. And then uh, we have, we're going to have some other joint CAC meetings to bring that in. And then there'll be other ways that we are working on right now to, to let the broader community review the, the, the document.
What's the goal for final adoption of the document?
I want to make this at least the AC forty-five plan. So uh, I would, I mean, we're trying to get to a fall, uh, early winter deadline. It'll be um,
In ninety-two.
It'll be at the board's pleasure, I think, how quickly we move.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Barnes. Any other AC forty-fours?
No, sir.
Any new business? Old business or items for follow-up?
Um, I have some old business, I guess. So um, today I went out with um, Supervisor Malik and county staff um, to Ridge Road where we have, we've had some um, concerns from the property owner. There's some no parking signs that have been, been put up. There's a conflict there with, with runners that use that part of the road. And so we met there with, with VDOT and we talked about potential solutions. Short news is we didn't come up with any really good solutions right now. We have some research tasks to do to follow up on. I think we decided the best long-term solution is to see if we can get a, a private property owner to donate um, a, a little area for parking. Uh, we did identify a place that would be ideal for that. We also identified on the opposite side of the road, there's a power line easement that could be a good way to get people from going from Decca to Ridge um, without having to go on very much on the road. If we can get um, permission from the um, the property owner um, for that, that easement. So there's going to be some research there to see if we can make that corridor, because it is one of the most popular, if not the most popular place for running and cycling in, in the county. So trying to make that area safer and without less conflict with other vehicles and stuff would be ideal.
Great. All right, thanks. Um, with that, I will adjourn the planning commission to the March eleventh, twenty twenty-five at four P M work session.